Good afternoon and welcome to the regularly scheduled May 16th meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. The meeting is called to order, and if you would, please join us in beginning the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you'll rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a time that we have set aside for planning commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements this afternoon?
This weekend, starting at nine, actually it starts at Friday at 6:00. There's going to be a greet over at Pete's Port for the bike marathon. A lot of the local guys that went to high school here are having a bike marathon that starts at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday and goes to Sunday for 24 hours. They're going to do laps around the Morro Bay High School track, which the track is being rebuilt. They're going to be tearing it out. So, one of the things that they're doing is they're collecting funds for the Morro Bay Track Team. If you want to donate to the cause, you can get ahold of Jack over at the Surf Skateboard Museum on the Embarcadero and help support that.
Very good, good cause. Any other? Nope, okay. With that then, we'll move on to the consent calendar, which tonight consists of the current and advanced planning processing list and the approval of minutes from our March 21st meeting. Are there any comments, additions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will proceed on to new business, starting with case number C1. This is something new for the planning commission. This is basically a concept review for a project that we anticipate coming before us in the future. And I think it's a really, it's a new concept. I think it's a really good idea to allow the planning commissioner, the applicant staff, to all sort of get on the same page before we start going through the formal approval process. So, with that, this is, right, you're right. I'm sorry, my fault. This is a public hearing, so we're going to first open this up to public comment. Anyone who would like to speak on any topic which is not on the agenda tonight, please come forward. We'd love to hear from you. Okay. We're good. Okay, so then we'll close up and comment, come back to item number C1, which involves UP 0-476 and CP 0-541 regarding a property located at 101 Fig Street here in Morro Bay. And I think Ms. Whitney McElveine will be presenting our staff report this evening.
Yeah, I think I'm going to touch base a little bit more on the conceptual review process and what it's used for. This is a process that I used for many years when I was in Pismo Beach for projects that were new, that came forward. A lot of times, they were used for commercial projects, and it allows the, I think as Chair Teff said, the applicant to come in here, you know, without discretionary permits on the line, to sit down and talk with the planning commission and to get input from them related to items on their project that maybe are in the gray areas of the code, that it also allow you to weigh in on what it looks like, what you think about the layout, and those types of things, before they kind of put their whole package together to come back in and spend a lot of time. Especially useful in commercial projects and unique projects, like the one that you have here this evening, that has a bluff involved, then it's got an existing structure on it, and sort of a unique configuration of how the lot came about, you know, in this location. So, and we also do, for all conceptual reviews, we do noticing, the same noticing we do for regular projects. So, it also gives the surrounding neighborhood the opportunity to come and speak if they want. So, with that, I think I'll turn it over to Whitney and let her jump into the project.
All right then. Good evening, commissioners, some members of the public. This is, as we talked about, a conceptual review of a possible two-story, single-family home at 101 Fig Street. On the screen, you can see the address with the little Google red balloon there. It's right at the bottom of what is Fig Street, an unpaved right-of-way, and it also fronts on Embarcadero in the Tidlins area. The zoning is R2PD, which looks like R2RD, but it's not. The existing development on the site is this little red house, seems to have been built in the early 1920s. It's approximately 300 to 400 square feet. This is just an APN, just to give you an idea of down at the bottom of Fig Street, which is sort of near the center of the screen, there's a little lot there that also fronts onto the Embarcadero. So, the existing site plan shows to the right the end of Fig Street, what was once Morrow, a part of Morrow Avenue that was abandoned, is the larger part of the lot. There is a large cypress tree up there now. Approximately in the middle of the lot, a little more toward the Embarcadero, begins a fairly steep bluff area. It's about 15 feet tall. Then that flattens out, which is where the little red house is. This is a proposed conceptual site plan, so that shows a newer home then up on the top area of the bluff. And I'm just going to run through a couple of the elevations that I have here. So, this is the east elevation that would face up Fig Street, probably wouldn't really be visible from Main. It sits way far down below Main Street. The west elevation that would face onto the Embarcadero, north, south, a lot of nice gable roof ends there. And I have floor plans here if we need to get into that kind of detail. I just put them up as part of my PowerPoint, just in case you had questions about that. So, that's all of the slides that I have here. I just wanted to say that when we were initially approached about this project, it quickly became apparent that there were definitely some issues. We still have our bluff standards, and although this is not a coastal bluff, it is not in the area between Surf and Anchor Street that is sort of exempted from the setback standards for bluff review areas. So, the normal setback standard would be 20 feet, and there are also some height restrictions for bluff setback standards, as you, I'm sure, recall. Both of those things would pretty much preclude anything else happening on the upper part of this lot, so that was definitely an issue. The historic nature of the existing structure was something that we talked about, and we would expect going forward with the project here to have a historic report on the site, as well as an archeological report. And it's, this project really lands in variance country mainly for setback and height issues, involving also a parking exception for a sort of lesser garage setback from the end of Fig, of 10 feet, where normally we would require 20 feet for a garage. So, there's a lot going on here. It's kind of an interesting piece of property, sort of a through lot, and so that's why it kind of qualified pretty neatly for this conceptual review process. We are just asking tonight that you hear a presentation from the applicant's representative, and perhaps the applicant's as well, and provide them with comments, issues that you foresee would expect to have addressed with any future project that comes in on this site. And I can try and answer some questions, too, and then we'll hear from the applicant's representative. So, that concludes my presentation.
Very well. Why don't we go ahead and open for public comment, hear from the applicant, and then I'll take, we'll take questions to whoever might be appropriate. So, this is a new business item. However, we are going to have a public comment period on it, so I'm going to open that now. Typically, we invite the applicant or applicant's representative to speak first, so please come forward, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, Chairman Teff, members of the commission. My name is Chuck Stevenson, and I'm here representing Jim and Gail Morgan, who are in the audience here this evening. And Jim and Gail Morgan want to construct a new house. They've owned this property for 21 years, and at this point, they would, they need a home that better accommodates their needs. And so that while they really love the little red house, it really doesn't suit them right now for what they would like. So, when we were looking at some options, we considered possibly adding on to the little red house, or possibly relocating it, removing it, and building it in this location. Those were rejected. For one, the little red house is, has a number of issues related to building code that wouldn't, it wouldn't be cost-effective to try and fix it. Plus, on that particular site, there's a high level of liquefaction because of the fill from the Embarcadero. And so, any kind of new footings for any new structure on the lower area would require pilings that would have to go down substantial, 50 to 75 feet, according to our geotechnical engineer. So, we, and plus, the Morgans love the little red house. The little red cabin is something they've grown really fond of. It is historic in many respects. It was sort of typical of the kinds of little homes that were built in Morro Bay back in the 20s. And here is one that's remaining that's been very well-maintained and is sort of iconic in that portion of the community. So, the Morgans routinely get people who are visiting the area stopping by, asking them questions about it, taking photographs, and so they really enjoy that exchange and really want to keep the building there. So, based on that, we started, we looked at options for looking at the upper area of the lot. So, that's a little bit of the background, and I appreciate the opportunity to do a conceptual review. This is a really complex site in terms of the kind of constraints that you would find typical basis for findings for variance. So, that's why we agree that this is certainly something that your commission, we would look forward to some input on, from your commission on this. So, just briefly, and Whitney, you went through these pretty, I'll go through these pretty quickly. So, this is just a location map and a close-up of the site. And so, this is an interesting parcel. The house was actually erected on this site back in the 20s. It was a time where there was a larger ownership by Nadine Richards and her family. And then this parcel itself was created in 1983 by action from the city of Morro Bay. It's an interesting combination of abandonment of a portion of Morro Road, which was through here. So, half of that abandonment went to Nadine Richards. Then there was a lawsuit that resulted in conveyance of a portion of state lands property to this parcel. So, it actually created a legal parcel that's almost 6,000 square feet, 60 by 95 or so. And so, that's what we have. And this is an image of the existing site topography and development on the property. The little red cabin is here. There's a tool shed, a deck area, and a concrete driveway. There's a retaining, a small, like a four-foot retaining wall at the base. And the existence of a cypress tree, which is nearly in the middle of the lot, it's a mature tree. We did look at what options we might have for trimming it, to try to retain it, but the way the limbs extend out virtually from just the base of the trunk, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be suitable to try and trim it. It would kill it. So, we had a survey done of the site and found out that the property lines weren't exactly in line with some fencing that was there. So, what this shows, these dark, the heavy unbroken lines are the exact property lines. And right now, this is the fence line, so we'd be moving this fence line and property line approximately five feet on this side over, away from the neighbor. And on this side, we actually gained about seven feet on this side, so this fence is in the inappropriate location as well. So, that's the existing condition. Just some images of the little red cabin, and what the Morgans have wanted to do is to replicate, to some extent, the appearance of the little cabin on the new structure. So, we'll be looking for board and bat siding, similar trim around the windows, metal roof, and sort of to try to complement the little red structure. So, we'd appreciate some comment from your commission on that concept idea. And so, the site has a number of concerns. Mainly, it is, as we apply the, I mentioned 25 feet, and I was corrected, it's 20-feet bluff setback. When you apply that and the rear setback on the upper area, it highly constrains anything you could build there. And then also, there's a height requirement that anything within 50 feet of a top of bluff, the height is only 14 feet. So, adding those together, you essentially preclude any reasonable-sized building on the upper area. And then the Morgans don't need a big house. What's being proposed is, I would characterize as relatively modest by today's standards, about 1,850 square feet. And it fits comfortably within the site. We've provided space in the event that a coastal access easement may be desired by the city for pedestrian access. There's, we've made sort of provision for that in that eventuality. And also, just the conceptual review is important to us because to move forward, as Whitney mentioned, we need to do a historic building report, an archeological Phase 1, and that may end up as a Phase 2, as well as a geotechnical engineering report. So, we want to get some sense of direction from your commission that this concept appears workable to you before we go to that next level of expense for the project. So, as Whitney mentioned, the biggest constraint is that the lot is bisected in the middle with the slope. If it was one way or another, that might be helpful. Then again, the presence of the little red cabin is another constraint from a historic building. We want to retain that. I think it's important for the community to maintain that in its current location. The cypress tree is another constraint. The lot itself is not large. It's just under 6,000 square feet, and as I mentioned, the liquefaction. So, in total, these kinds of constraints sort of put this lot as a sort of poster child for variance findings on hardship related to the land. So, again, these are the particular zoning standards that we would be looking for relief with a variance at a future date. So, as I mentioned, the proposed development is a two-story house, and that's, again, because a one-story house in that location, if we apply the setbacks, would make it so small as to be impractical. We would replace the cypress tree with a box specimen-sized tree in the front setback, so it would, in time, accomplish what the existing cypress tree does. We have access from both Fig Street as well as the Embarcadero, and we want to maintain that. And then up on where Fig Street intersects with Main Street, we would construct a new driveway approach with curb gutter and sidewalk along that front edge per Public Works' recommendation. And so, this is just depicting that concept, and where the new tree is located here as well, we would replace the existing tree. And as I mentioned, so access, if access were desired by the fire department, for instance, there's a concrete driveway here, there's a concrete walkway and steps up to this location here. So, it could be approached from either the Embarcadero or from Fig Street. So, these are just some images of the building itself. Again, the goal was, the design goal was to try to complement the little red house, as well as fit in, in terms of scale and massing, with existing buildings in the neighborhood to not overwhelm it. I included a view from Fig Street. This is almost up to Main, not quite at Main Street, but looking down, and that's the cypress tree. And so, it would, it would be visible as you go down Fig Street, but not likely from Main Street. But even still, the view, the elevation is an attractive elevation as viewed from Fig Street. So, we're actually presenting the front to Fig Street. And again, the goal is to match the siding and color and materials on the new house with what's existing. And just a point to say that there are examples of existing development that are at the, at or near the top of the bluff currently. The image on the left side is about two lots north of the Morgans' property. The one to the right is about 250 feet south. And so, I won't go into these too much, but just to point out that the required findings from the Morro Bay Municipal Code for approving a variance are very similar everywhere and specified in state law. But just to repeat that this is not a special privilege. This is an unusual site with a combination of property-related problems that, when you apply the zoning ordinance standards, would preclude reasonable building. So, I just wanted to include those as part of the record here, but I'm sure you're familiar with these. So, just to sum up, what we're looking for this evening is your commission's thoughts, ideas, direction on the concept, and we will walk away from that with hopefully some direction and a decision on how to proceed. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing is open. If anyone else would like to speak to this issue, please, let's hear from you.
Hey, I'm Bonnie Nelson. I live at 12421 First Street, past Robles, and my family has owned the property to the south of this proposed lot since the 1920s. My grandfather bought it at that time. Our first concern was the fence, we knew the fence was on the wrong side of the property. It's been that way for a long time, and no one's moved it. The second concern we have is a two-story house. It does affect our property and our views, and we're concerned that this is a legal lot, and, you know, it needs to go by the legal standards. Everything seems to be, well, if we can do this, we do that. But is it really a legal, buildable lot? And that's, we're concerned with that, that it needs to meet those standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to be heard on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for questions for, oh. Questions for staff or for the applicant representative? Pardon? Public comment is still open.
Dana McLush, resident. I live across the street on Main Street, and I've known the Morgans for quite a while, and I know the Nelsens, and we have a nice little neighborhood there. And the red house, I know it pretty well. It's, they can't really use that anymore. There's issues with getting older and things like that, to make it so that they need to get in from a ground level, and Fig Street would make that accessible. I don't have a problem with the height or the variances that are needed for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Then I will ask if there are questions for staff or for the applicant?
One question for staff. I would imagine that, in particular, the height restriction was on the books at the time of the purchase of the property. Was that a, anyone, no one? I'm trying to get to what sort of notice or legal notice the applicant might have had when they purchased the property. Any idea?
I don't believe our bluff standards have changed since, I think they purchased it in 1996. I think that they're the same standards essentially that we have in our zoning regulations today. That said, there are also, there's also existing development in the immediate sort of vicinity surrounding neighborhood that is not in compliance with those standards.
So, we would, as far as a variance goes, or if we decide to let them build here, we would be requiring variances on multiple standards. On the bluff standards, we'd be, we would need, the bluff standard should be 20 feet from top of bluff for building footprint, and 50 feet for anything over 14-foot in height. Do I understand that correctly?
Essentially, yes. I mean, you could go up to 17 feet with a 4 and 12 pitch roof.
And then, how would we handle the multiple structures? Would the, would the existing house be deed-restricted as far as it couldn't be rented out as an Airbnb, or would it be deed-restricted? Is there no habitable living area? Or would it fall under the secondary dwelling unit category? Where would that fit in?
Conceivably, it could fall under the secondary dwelling unit category. From what I understand, I have not looked at this property or that structure myself. There would need to be some upgrades or, you know, alterations. There would need to be some upgrades or, you know, alterations to better comply with current building code standards. I think that decision hasn't been made with any certainty by the applicants yet. They're sort of looking to see if they can proceed with this newer, you know, actual sort of for-real house. And other thoughts were just using it as an accessory structure, storage?
So you're...
Not as a living structure.
Kitchen and bathrooms would be removed or something to that effect? We would restrict it to that effect? Or would it still be a rentable space?
Let's just say that is an issue that would need to be clarified if they choose to go forward with this project. I mean, that's the exact kind of thing we're sort of looking to hear that needs to be addressed in the future.
Okay. And the other issue I have is fire access. I drove down Fig Street.
Whee!
Yeah. And I almost needed four-wheel drive. Not quite. In the mud, you could. So I'm concerned about fire access as far as, has the fire department looked at this and looked at, you know, as bringing, in case there's a conflagration around there or some kind of emergency? Could they get an ambulance down there? Could they get a pumping truck down there? And where's the closest fire hydrant to the site?
Both fire and Public Works have taken a look at this and are still essentially in discussion about what level of improvements, if any, and where would need to occur to better accommodate emergency access to this site. Just keep in mind that this is an existing situation, and they have had to go down there, you know, to deal with one thing or another in its current configuration with, there are different other houses and adjoining properties down there. So it's not that they can't get there because they can. They can also take access from Embarcadero. And obviously, again, that's another issue that is going to have to be really clearly flushed out with any actual future project on this site.
Yeah, it's one thing to have an existing situation. It's another to create a new hazard.
Correct, you are.
And that's what I'd be concerned about. Okay, thank you.
Whitney, what's the height of the existing Little Red House?
Oh, gosh, hard question. Well, it is a really steeply pitched roof, and I'm probably going to defer to Chuck Stevenson in this case. There is a smaller, there's a lower level and sort of an upper level, and then there's that super steep roof, so...
Like from Embarcadero is what I'm thinking.
Almost 20 feet, maybe. I don't know.
I'd say close to 20 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the pitch of the roof.
Okay. And then the, and then there's access from Embarcadero, you said, to the existing structure?
Yes.
Okay. That's how you get to it now, right?
You can get to it either way now.
Yeah.
But practically speaking, the way the Morgans access it now is from the Embarcadero because it's right there. But they can get access and have used Fig Street to access the upper area of the lot.
Okay.
And just to answer an earlier question, since I have the mic here, so there is a fire hydrant at Main and Fig, and there has been ambulance access down Fig Street.
Can we go back to the legal lot slide?
The accessory map?
That one, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah. So the two dotted lines that are on there, that represents where the property actually got larger in 80s, mid 80s?
This line right here is an edge of right away from Morrow. And this is also, so they got one half, Nadine Richards got one half of that, which is the customary way on an abandoned street, right? So that depicts that portion. And this part down here was the Tideland's relinquishment by State Lands through the city of Morro Bay and quitclaim to Nadine Richards.
So the edge, the western edge of Fig was already established at that point? Or did it extend, was Fig Street in that configuration at that point?
I don't know. I don't know that.
I'll just jump in for a minute because I was looking at this this afternoon, too. It looks to me like that upper portion of Morrow sort of defaulted to Fig Street. So in earlier, much earlier subdivision, Fig Street ended, you can kind of follow that dashed line just below the letter F. And Fig Street ended there originally.
And...
As far as I can tell from what I looked at this afternoon.
So let me understand the jurisdictional procedure here. When the question was brought up about abandonment of a portion of Fig, that was rejected, why?
I can explain that. So one of the early options that the Morgans and I were looking at was, well, what if we could get an abandonment of Fig Street and acquire, purchase from the adjoining property owners, say 30 feet east up on Fig? That would enable us to move the house back off the bluff, get the bluff setback, and build a reasonably sized parcel. That was our idea. But the adjoining property owners were not interested, at least at this time, of considering that. And frankly, the Morgans would have no standing in an abandonment because it goes, half goes to each adjoining property owner. So they would, the way it would work would have been to do an abandonment, which would have gone to each of the side property, and then a lot line adjustment concurrently where the Morgans would pay the neighboring property owners for that based on an appraisal. So it got a little complicated, but it was at least something we felt we needed to at least explore. Was that an option? And it was declined.
And I guess the other question I have is, is the property to the north looks like there's a driveway that extends to Fig right now? I don't see where that's documented in anything. Is it...
Do I have this right here?
Yeah. Or one of the properties in one of the images, it looked to me, and I'm sorry I didn't get down there to see this in person, but it looked to me like the one, maybe it's the picture when you looked down Fig, I saw it. Or maybe there. Like you see the adjacent house and the car that's there. It looked to me like, what's the car just to the right of the red dashed line there?
It's right here?
Yeah.
Well, this is Fig.
So is that a driveway into the adjacent northern property off of Fig?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's some kind of existing aspect of the adjacent property owner that has access by vehicle?
That property owner is here, so he could address...
Well, I don't want, I'm just, we're talking about hypotheticals anyway. I just wanted to make sure I... So the approximate line that that so-called bottom of the F was that Whitney was referring to?
Right here.
Is that, no, it's not there. Isn't it farther to the east? Is that about where it is?
No, that's about where it is.
Hmm.
That's pretty accurate.
Okay, I'll save some of the comments that I have on that situation for the commentary period. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. I just had one question to see if we could clarify with you. You mentioned that the existing house would be converted to a residential accessory use. Can you be more specific than that?
Sure, yeah. Well, you know, it would require a lot of money to fix that building, to make it such that it would be a rentable, livable space. And we would want, I would want, building inspection, an engineer. There's a lot of potential issues for that if you're going to, if the city were going to recognize that as a legal home, the city would, I'm sure, want to have that inspected and certify that it's safe. And so my thought is on that is it might be better to just convert it to an accessory storage use or an artist studio, something where it's not being lived in. That might be ultimately the best solution for that. Certainly, the zoning would permit, this R2, it would permit maybe Airbnb or something like that, but it would be based on some real, first of all, we want to get our historic building report completed. We want to understand what the nature, when this was built, all the details of it, and understand its importance from a sequoia standpoint. If it could be made into a rentable unit, that would be fine, but it would be a lot of money. So I'm not sure it's worth it. But it's worth keeping, in my opinion, and in the Morgans' because of its unique design, if you will.
Yeah, just one other question. The plans call for the planned new residents, they call for an architectural composition roof, but you're saying metal roof, so could you clarify?
Correct. And I thank you for mentioning that. So the Morgans, I discussed this with them after the drawings were done, and they said, no, we want to do a metal, we wanted to have it replicate what the Little Red House is. It's a metal roof.
Very good.
While you're up here, you mentioned that the issue of liquefaction at the existing house. And then you go up the bluff, and you know, the engineer was talking about putting pilings down like 50, 70. Is that where the bedrock is to tie the bedrock? Now, on the bluff, you don't have those same issues, huh?
No, we don't have those. We will have a footing design based on the capacity of the slope to, you know, it'll be designed, but it won't be the piling kind of footing that we would have to do down in the lower area, which is subject to high liquefaction. So there'd be some kind of deeper footing on that, on the side, on the west side of the house.
I'm not following the logic behind that.
Sure.
Because if you need it down below, wouldn't you...
It's different soil. What's on the lower portion is all fill. It's all sand fill, basically, thick sand fill. You need to penetrate through that to get to solid soil condition, and that is deep.
Okay.
And that's different than on the slope. On the slope, we're going to have a whole different design parameter from, our geotechnical engineer will design it as though it's on a hillside lot, like you see in other lots in Morro Bay, North Morro Bay, and other places where we design footings based on soil compaction and slope stability.
Okay.
Different problem. Sure.
It's hard for me to grasp where the adjacent structures are. We're going to be, it's typical in Morro Bay, you know, the old surveys are five, six, eight feet out. That could push you, you know, push you into the setbacks, you know, of the existing structures, both north and south of here. So how did, how do those structures relate to your new, the new property lines that you established?
It doesn't affect, it actually improves from the Nelsons' property. It improves it considerably, moves it, moves the property line about five feet to the north away from them. On the other side, it doesn't really affect the house on that side.
Okay, they're still far enough away. And then if you, perchance, you know, in the best of all possible worlds, you were able to get the abandonment and repurchase to move the lot, lot line eastward, where would that fit with that, you know, both the north and the southern structures that are adjacent to this property?
Well, it would be problematic. I mean, that is one concern that the Nelsons had. They didn't want to be sort of boxed in. If that property line moves back, what does that do to their house that's there? So it wasn't, I think that was, and I'm sure Ms. Nelson can speak to that, but that was one of the concerns that they had. So I think eventually, I know Rob Leibig supports abandonment of that street. But that may happen eventually with redevelopment of the McClush property. We're just, we just had to move on. It's not even in our plan at all to consider that at all. So that's not, that's not on the table, or won't be on the table at all, so.
And would you have concurrence with the adjacent property owners to create a two-standard driveway for those three properties?
Well, it would really need concurrence with them because there's, they would need, it would need to use some of their property for that kind of...
And have you had discussions with them yet on that?
I discussed with Rob Leibig the need for that, and he said it wouldn't be necessary. It's a private driveway. It's not a city-maintained road. Its legal status is that it's a platted track road.
Okay. I just see that the drop off, the elevation change off of Main Street is the concern.
That's significant. That needs to be addressed. And we'll address that with engineering to get that slope more gradual. That needs to be addressed, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Michael? I just want to try to establish the two homes that you spoke about, the one to the south, or the one to the north appears to be one story that you were quoting.
Right.
And the one to the south that was 300, 250 feet away, that one is two stories?
I don't recall if that's two-story. The only point was that they were right on the bluff. And in this particular case, if you enforce the bluff setback, it wouldn't result in virtually anything up there. It would so constrain it, so...
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions? With that, then, we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Richard, why don't you start us out tonight?
I drove down there, and I have, my concerns are that, one of the main things is, I believe that going two stories on that bluff is going to be a problem. Because when I look around at existing houses, it's definitely going to affect their, well, just call it neighborhood compatibility, because all the houses surrounding there are one-story. The other thing is, is that, you know, they're going to have to remove that cypress tree that should be, there should be, which we've been removing a lot of trees, but we should start, you know, think about addressing, mitigating that issue. The other concern I have is regardless how expensive, you know, everything is, the, keeping the second, you know, I like the fact that, okay, it's a historic building and everything else, but I foresee that being like, you could rent that as an artist's studio on the Craigslist or whatever, and that would be, you know, I'm sure, no problem to rent. However, I understand that you want to, you know, they want, you know, to get a nicer home and all that, but my main thing is, is that is a very, like, when they purchased that lot, it is a challenging lot right from the beginning. Keeping, this is something that I'm not quite sure, keeping that house, the existing red cabin house, and not just taking it down and building something right there, I'm not sure if that wouldn't be better. If you want to go two-story, go there. But my main concern is the massing and the height issue where you're building on a bluff there.
Michael?
I think there's a couple issues that it's sort of like you want to push-pull on each issue to see where the concerns are. The first thing is, in terms of the house compatibility with the red structure, I don't see any. It looks like a very suburban-style home from the west elevation that's going to be on top of our most public part of our waterfront. I don't think it has anything to do with the existing building. Even if you paint it red, the windows don't have the molyian pattern, they don't have the same shape. It's discouraging to see the two stories, and then the upper floor actually cantilevers out farther, which just makes it... out farther, which just makes it that much more massive from below. So, in terms of compatibility, I don't like the solution with the two stories at all. I think if we're going to move things closer to the bluff, we can't move them closer and challenge the height of the bluff. I don't see any indication that the lower part of the property was investigated. I understand there may be a concern of the owners, but set of stairs with a small kind of funicular device or something to go from something down low to something up high, if you could somehow ask for a variance of things like the garage, maybe it's open parking down below, then all of a sudden up above, you've got a space of a garage that can turn into a room, and maybe you can work out a one-story house if your parking is taken care of down on the lower end. I'd much more, be more interested in a variance that addressed a parking situation with a garage next to a giant parking lot that's a public space than I would trying to accommodate a garage inside a house that we're asking to be two stories high at the edge of the bluff. I'm terribly disappointed something couldn't be worked out with the lot line adjustment on FIG, because I think that would also encourage a one-story solution, that I would be open to accepting the bluff setback if it was a one-story solution. So, my, my position would be, I'm not in favor of the two-story solution as it's presented at all, and I would much rather see all the, all the other solutions exhausted before I'd entertain something like that.
Jerry?
I appreciate the, you know, well, I appreciate this concept review. I think this is really, you know, better for the clients, better for the, better for us, they can get the feedback prior to, you know, investing a whole lot more money into it. I'm disappointed in this lot that there couldn't have been a solution where it could have been brought, where with the lot line adjustment, and it couldn't be brought into, into the On one side, they bought this lot with the standards in place. They bought it with full knowledge that this was, that, you know, that this is what was there, it was on the ground, the codes were in place, nothing, nothing happened that brought, that created new codes on top of the existing parcels, the existing parcel. I, you know, really appreciate that the red house, and it's iconic, you know, to be maintained and restored, you know, I think that's really, really important, would be, you know, a really important portion of this project. I have, there would be no way that I would issue, would condone a variance for a second story on this at all. Within the bluff setbacks, we would be, they would be asking for two variances, and the second variance would be, is not, wouldn't be required for their, for their use and enjoyment of their property to a minimal extent, which is, you know, which is a basis for the requirement, for the findings, for the variance. I would be hard-pressed, you know, I would consider it, but I'd be hard-pressed to issue the first variance, to agree to the first variance on the bluff setbacks until, or unless, that we've changed in the updated, you know, GP and LCP, we were going to review the bluff top ordinances in its right. So, you know, I would suggest that the clients put input into that process and, you know, see where that goes, and a variance may not even be required. So, this is a tough, this is a really tough piece of property, but, and then I do, you know, and the other option is, we have no, we have no control over what happens to that tree, but that is a, it's a very nice specimen, and we have lost so many of those specimens, and, you know, for my thoughts, that we should have a historic tree ordinance in this town, and we should have had it for the last 30 years, but, but we don't. So, we can't use that one way or another, but that, that's a real concern to me, that a very nice specimen of a, of a disease-resistant tree is being removed to give somebody of two variances to build where they couldn't build within our present ordinances. So, that's my, that's my concern. So, as far as direction, I would say, you know, one story at best, at best under the, you know, very, you know, and I wouldn't even be, wouldn't even be sure of that, but I would, I would like to wait to see what the new bluff top ordinances have to say and where they come out.
Joe?
This is a difficult proposition. You know, at first blush, it seems like this is a property that doesn't lend itself to further development. But then, I think you, at least the test that I would employ would be, you know, one of equity or fairness, or whether there would be some sort of substantial community advantage to granting an exception to the rules that everybody else is living by. So, with respect to fairness, you know, I looked at the property, and the immediate neighborhood seems to be one-story houses. I don't have a problem with the bluff setback, because it seems like the logic of setting it back from the bluff to safeguard against sea erosion doesn't really make that much sense the way it's situated. But with respect to height, there definitely is a problem. So, the neighborhood is complying with the existing height requirement, and as noted, the applicants, you know, bought the property with the, with the, with the notice of that restriction in place, and there doesn't seem to be any, you know, community controversy over maintaining that height in that immediate neighborhood. So, you know, in terms of a fairness argument, I don't, I don't see the, you know, an equity argument working here. Now, with respect to, if we look at substantial community advantage in this wonderful little historic red cottage, perhaps, what I'm, what I'm looking at is, if we were to make an exception, we would have to be careful that it didn't have any precedent value, because these properties in the surrounding area might be developed, and if we're not careful, those properties could be developed as second stories. So, is there something unique about this property that would convey a substantial community advantage if we allowed a second-story structure? You know, I could, I could see where somehow the red house becomes quasi-public property, or the public has access to it, or somehow it's preserved in its current state, something of that nature. But absent that, absent a really substantial community advantage drawing the exception, and nothing requiring that equity make us, adopt an exception, I don't see this as working.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would, I agree with Commissioner Ingracchia to the extent that there really isn't an issue of wave erosion at this, at this place, at this point. And to my mind, the purpose of the bluff development standards here in Morro Bay have really been to sort of preserve the bluff edge as a scenic, geologic feature from, you know, from looking, looking in from the waterfront. Having said that, then, I am also concerned about the proposed height. Just looking at the plans, it appears that the building site is about 15 feet above the level of the Embarcadero at this point, and then we're talking at another 25 feet on top of that, so we're really talking about 39 feet, almost straight up. I mean, you know, given the, given the short distance of that slope, and I think that's, I think that's going to be intrusive. I think that's, I think that's going to intrude upon the streetscape to a good extent. So, I'm wondering if there's, in those areas of the Embarcadero to the north of this, where the bluff development standards don't apply, one of the, one of the principles is that development is strongly encouraged to step down the bluff face. And I'm wondering if that's not a possible solution, rather than simply plopping the house onto the upper level here to have it work its way down the slope with excavation so that the roof line is reduced proportionally in that area. Now, obviously, the garage would, needs to be as close to the elevation of Fig Street as possible so that, you know, your driveway is not an impossible situation. And that probably would mean that the second story would have to be moved from being over the garage to being on the other side of the house. But I'm, I'm wondering if that's not a possibility to reduce this visual impact, which I see as being pretty substantial at this point. And to add to that, to add to that, I would agree with Michael that the attempt to provide architecture which is compatible with the existing fishing cottage, or whatever you want to call it, is not very successful. To me, you know, just when you, when you look at that, the most distinctive architectural feature is the roof slope, and that's, that's gone from the proposed house. So, I think in order to really be consistent with that, you know, we need to have, we need to see roof materials and pitch which are consistent with the existing, and I agree, it's an iconic structure, and sort of, the whole design needs to key off of that. The battenboard siding, I think, is good, multi-pane windows, and also, I think the, we need, we would need to look at the ratio of window area to wall area to make sure that the two are sort of consistent with each other. So, again, increasing, so that may mean, that may in fact mean, in order, again, to minimize height, that, that you would need some sort of a dormered solution for the second story, rather than, rather than just straight-up walls. So, I can, I can, I can, I can see a proposal that would, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this house being built. I'm not opposed to allowing better utilization of this property. I can, I can certainly see a solution that would be more agreeable than what's proposed here. I think it's going to take a good deal more thought in terms of design. In terms of the existing building, I think it's a no-brainer. Either kitchen and bathing facilities need to be removed, or that we need to ensure that there's adequate parking, which there appears to be on the existing driveway. It just, make sure that that would not be removed as part of the development. The other thing, I mean, obviously, the integrity of this four-foot retaining wall will need to be assessed. That's kind of a no-brainer. And, you know, one of the thoughts that I have is that if Fig Street is potentially an actual street, and I, it seems that the current situation is not one that will persist forever, somewhere, somewhere in this area would be an excellent place for pedestrian access to Tideland's Park, given the fact that the nearest one is two and a half, three blocks away. So, perhaps, perhaps between this property and one of the adjacent properties, eventually, if we could get an easement for three feet from this property, it may be three feet from an adjacent property, there's a, there's a real potential public benefit in terms of allowing for pedestrian access. So, I guess that's kind of, so those are kind of my takes on it. I think, I think the architecture, while this is attractive, I just don't see it as being particularly compatible with the iconic existing house. And I think we, I think the, the issue of stepping down the bluff rather than putting everything at the top really needs to be looked at strongly. Having, having said that, I would note that I think Morro Bay can now claim to be the origin of the tiny house movement. So, are there any other comments from the commission?
Your, your recommendation is, a lot to recommend it, but it, it might encourage the demolition of that red house.
Oh, no, no, no. The demolition of the red house is a no-go in my, I mean, that's a good way to assure that I would not support the variances.
Okay. We're clear on that, then? Yeah. Can I?
Sure.
I'll comment on your, your, this, you know, your solution, although it would work, and it would work in certain instances, I mean, it doesn't work with the zoning and the requirements on the bluff top zonings and the setbacks that are in place for all the rest of the property that are around there.
That's true.
So, we would essentially be opening up a special, either a special privilege, or it would, it would open up a whole nother can of worms for every other property along Tideland Park to build down that bluff.
No. By the nature of a variance, it will not do that, because you'll be making special, special findings specific to this lot. By the nature of a variance, it does not set precedent, period, so don't think that it does.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, you need to be very clear here, because if you think you're setting precedent, then you're not approving a variance. I mean, this is not what we're doing here tonight, but I can't really state that strongly enough. You're saying that this is unique enough, wherever we're at, you know, whatever the variance request is, if you approve it, that it's not precedent-setting specifically by the nature of approving the variance, because of the findings that are associated with it. Hopefully, that's clear.
Well, I think, yeah, and I think the question, if, just to respond, I think the question, the question, the central question is, because you have to find this, what is unique about this property that is not the case with other properties in the neighborhood? To me, what is unique is the, number one, the existence of a historic or iconic structure which the city wishes to preserve, and number two, the short distance between the bluff top and the property line. Whereas all the other lots along here are much deeper, the solution is, you know, pretty simple, move the house east 20 feet.
But they can still have a structure and a house on this site, and they can have it as a single, a single story and not exceed the height limitation without stepping it down the bluff top, down the bluff side. And so, that's why I would, I would argue strongly against that solution.
I just want to chime in on that as well. I think that the, one of the things that we're forgetting is the nature of the way the bluff acts as a background to a lot of the Embarcadero, and I think there've been unfortunate parts of town where that's been compromised, and I think here, given the fact that we have a kind of a park setting, seeing the green background, even though I'd be willing to look at it, at a, like I said, a movement or walkway kind of compromise, that I think would be a mistake to challenge the, the background quality of the bluff. I'm more than willing to look at the nature of the top setback, because it appears that other structures of reasonable size have also done that in the immediate area, but I would not... But I, I would not be in favor of building on the bluff with a structure itself.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong now. This red, little red cabin thing, is there any reason why, why it can't be torn down?
We don't know that, hence the historic report requirement. We don't know what its impact is related to Sequa. We don't even know what it was, really, I don't think. I think it was converted to something that people might be staying in. My guess is it probably wasn't a structure, it wasn't, it wasn't a habitable structure to begin with. And so it's probably not even correct to call it a house, or a cottage, or any of those types of things. It was probably something else that sort of morphed over time without benefit of proper permits to get where it's at. Not uncommon, you know, in town, but that's probably, that's a little bit of my, you know, reading the tea leaves and crystal ball and that type of thing. And so that's one of the things, you know, when you go through the historic report process that, that will determine, and, and we'll know then what it was, hopefully, and looking back at tax records and those types of things, and sandborne maps and all that kind of good stuff, and, and see what it, see what it was, it was classified as, and go from there.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, if, if I'm to flashback a little bit, I, I would say this was probably somebody's little vacation house, you know, right there. However, to me, when you start building like that close one, the left setback, it, you know, right now, you look at it, and it, part of the cuteness of it is the settings around it. See, now you put a house there, and it dwarfs that thing. To me, it's like, it take the, takes the charm right out of, the purpose out of it.
Well, we'll have to, you know, have appropriate visual simulations that would come along with this to show you what that impact would be, what it looks like when you put the house up there.
Yeah.
Type of thing. I think, you know, we got a, yeah, we got a lot of input also that, that wasn't much desire to have the second floor, it seems like. So we, we will, we will explore that with, with the applicant, and talk to them about what it would look, what, what a single story could look like, how, what are the options available to them, and moving that around, and maybe looking at, at other things, moving it maybe further back on the lot, and having a reduced setback related to the, that property line that faces the Fig Street right of way sort of makes sense. We'll, we'll investigate all, you gave us a lot of good input. I, I think that's what this is for, and I think you did a good job, and I think we sort of need to go chew on that a little bit and sit down. I mean, I have some ideas, I just told Whitney, let's talk tomorrow, so we can kind of lay those out a little bit, and then we'll set a meeting with the applicant, and we'll go over it with them. That's, that's normally how this process, you know, unfolds.
The other point that I, you know, I, it took me off-guard a little bit, but what Commissioner Lucas said about the parking or garage down on the bottom there, might be something to, but you know, the, the thing is, the, the thing is then, is now you got the traffic going in on the Embarcadero to get in there, right? So you're not really, you're only using Fig Street as a walk-in, I guess, if it was that.
Yeah, there are certainly trade-offs to a number of the, of the, of the concepts that were, that were, you know, discussed here tonight. And I think they were all just that. They were all ideas and, and input that you provided based on your review of them, which is, which is what this is for.
Okay.
You know, I, certainly, they can't do all of them, because a lot of them conflict. But I, but I think they, they can do some of them. And, and some of those may work just fine for, for what they're trying to achieve, and we probably do need to get a little more information on what that existing structure is, so we, we can make a little bit more of an informed decision as it relates to that. Because characterizing it and thinking of it as a, as, oh, the, the lot has a residence on it, eh, maybe it doesn't. Maybe it just has a structure on it. And so that may change thoughts on that, you know, from that standpoint. I don't know. So, anyway.
And if the, the square footage of the house is left under 1,000 square feet, then you only need one parking, one covered parking spot, too. And that could actually be handled either down below or up above.
Yeah, like I said, we have some ideas about things we might be able to do to sort of, sort of work through all this.
What is that, 1,000 square? 1,000 square feet.
So I guess, just to summarize, then, I, I'm not hearing a lot of support for a two-story structure at this location. Is that pretty much, we do, I'm not hearing a lot of support for stepping down the, the bluff, okay? I, I, I'm not hearing a lot of objection to the idea of perhaps a reduced rear yard setback to, to allow a little more square footage in a one-story structure. Architectural consistency with the existing structure, is that important?
Yeah. And I think having the, the ridgeline run east-west instead of north-south would be important.
That old roof, yeah?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we have sort of a summary. Let me, let me open it up to the applicant. I think the applicant wanted to make some, so let me open public comment again for that purpose.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commission. You've, you've explored all the problems we've, we've been dealing with on this. How do we, how do we design this to make it work, and make it compatible, and meet their needs for a reasonable-sized home? And I think you gave us some interesting input, some good input. We'll, we'll try to come back with some other concept. It's going to be, it'll be a challenge, but I appreciate your thoughts on, on where we're heading. It's, it's really a tough site, and I think from a variance standpoint, as the Director indicated, there, you have plenty of basis to make findings for variance on this, in my experience. So, and not be precedent-setting, there's enough going on. I think what's really critical is when we get the historic building report. We need to understand what significance it has. I mean, certainly from a, just an architectural appearance, not so sure. I don't, I doubt if it was designed by a noteworthy architect. I doubt if it was occupied necessarily by an important Morro Bay resident, although that's, that's possible, very possible. But, so these are things that kind of contribute to the decision, is it, is it worth keeping? And I know the Morgans love it. I mean, they, they want to keep it. That's not, that's not even on the table from their perspective. But from a practical standpoint, is it a historically important building? We, we don't know yet. We think it might be. So, we'll go back to the drawing board and, and try to bring something back that looks more acceptable.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I would just, I would just comment that I think this is a great process. I mean, here, we, we get a chance to give input without, without the applicant having gone to all the trouble to do landscape plans and color charts and that sort of thing. So, so I would, I would really encourage us to continue doing these kinds of reviews.
You can understand about the other reports that he has to do that he hasn't done yet because he wanted to get the input. Those are thousands of dollars' worth of reports. So, just those, those by themselves were fairly expensive.
So with that then, we're about to move into the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. Why don't we take about a five-minute break at this point, and come back at nine, at 7:22? Good evening, and welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting for this evening. We are moving on to new business item number C2, which has to do with review of the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. I think we've got our computer situation up and going. I, I see that Amy Sensheimer from Michael Baker International has joined us. And so I will turn this over to Scott for staff report.
I think we'll just hop right into it. I'll turn it over to Amy, and she can get rolling.
Great. Good evening, Chair Teft and members of the Commission. Like you already mentioned, we are here to receive your input and review of the draft Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. And it has been available for several months. We have discussed it with the General Plan Advisory Committee at several meetings. So we're excited to hear what you have to say, and I'm going to give a brief overview of the plan. I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it, but I'm very happy to answer, get into the details if there are certain things you have questions about before providing your comments. So, these are the objectives for the plan. It's about a 10-year horizon, so it's a pretty near-term planning effort to identify some priorities for the downtown and waterfront areas of the city. Connecting the downtown and the waterfront was one of the priorities that was established before we began the work, and has continued to come up in all of the input we've received. We have drafted design guidelines as part of the draft plan, and looked at sites and what we're calling catalyst projects that are associated with one or more of those sites for this 10-year implementation period. And then we have a, a chapter near the end that identifies how that implementation can be rolled out, who is responsible for it, and, you know, what groups can come together to, to work on it in addition to the city. Here's our project area. As you can see, it spans all of the Embarcadero, and this goes all the way the extent of Morro Bay Boulevard, and then areas along the edges of those areas. The pinkish-colored blobs are our opportunity sites that we've identified. We are definitely looking for your input on those, as well as other areas of the plan. The yellowish dotted lines are also included in the opportunity sites, but are more of corridors. And they have catalyst projects that make more sense for a corridor, rather than for a particular parcel or a set of parcels. So just to briefly go over the catalyst projects that we've identified as of interest and that there is a need for in Morro Bay. The Harbor Walk, making that extend the entire length of the Embarcadero and be contiguous. Having some sort of seafood hall or seafood market, we've had a lot of discussion so far, and input so far, in what the appropriate name and scope for this project would be, but for now, that's what we're calling it. This would be a place, probably a permanent structure, where local seafood and other wares could be sold, both for locals and visitors. Family outdoor entertainment, this is, could be a variety of things. It could be associated with the water, but for the most part, it would be something that would involve people of all ages, including children. Creative mixed-use projects, this would be also a pretty broad category, but could include some residential and some other uses. The photo at the bottom there is kind of a makerspace sort of concept, so there could be sort of that, a live-work concept involved in this catalyst project. Egotourism would involve, you know, things like kayaking and boat tours, like you already have here. So it could be increasing things that already exist, or adding things that maybe aren't in Morro Bay yet, that involve the environment and preservation of natural resources combined with tourism. Cultural or history or maritime museum, or some combination of those things. This is something that has definitely been identified for a particular site, which is the Triangle Parking Lot Site, already in terms of planning, but there are a couple other sites where we're discussing the possibility for a museum. A full-service hotel and conference center. This is something that could be of various scales, so we've heard a lot of input on appropriate scale and scope of this project, but the idea is to have more than just a, a hotel, to have services on-site. Waterfront and downtown streetscaping, this is associated with those corridors, as I was mentioning when we were looking at the map. So this would be having a cohesive design for the streetscape, and adding to the amenities that we have already in terms of making it inviting to walk and hang out in the Embarcadero and the downtown. And then we have a boatyard and haul-out facility, which is something else that we have heard a lot about in input for the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan, as well as the General Plan, LCP, overall. And it's also something that is already moving forward in terms of the planning stages. The Design Guidelines Chapter, I'm, I'm not going to read off every single thing here, but it has general design guidelines for the entire project area, and then some that are specific to the waterfront and the downtown respectively, and does include a variety of topics listed here. And then, as I mentioned, we have an implementation matrix that includes all of the catalyst projects, and then it also includes other actions that should be prioritized within this 10-year period, and a little more detail about what those actions are. Short, medium, and long-term timeframe suggested for each one, as well as who could be, take the lead, and then also supportive roles on implementation. So that is a very brief introduction, and Scott, unless there's anything else you wanted to mention, we'll open it up to your comments.
This is a new business item, but as we did with C1, I do see we have one member of the public that's still in the audience, so I will ask if there, I will open it up for public comment if any members would like to come forward. Seeing none then, we will close public comment, bring it back for, do we have any questions for staff?
Let me ask one quick question. Where are we in this? These are just recommendations. There's going to be another iteration that goes to the Council?
That's a very good question. We've taken inputs on several meetings from the General Plan Advisory Committee, so this, as it stands right now, that board has eight members. And we haven't, so it, you always sort of, what are we going to do? We took, we took that input, and we have it. We haven't rolled it into the, the current version of the document. And we're here getting your input, which we were going to take, and then look at what the G-PAC provided, and start rolling that into a finalized product. So you're, you're asking, will it be done at this point? No, because we'd be taking your input there. We, we could have done it differently, I suppose, and picked up some of the G-PAC commentary, enrolled it into this, and then gave it, gave it to you. That's just not the, not the direction we went with it. So, anyway. So we will be, we will be making changes to the document based on input that we already have, and then potentially more, based on ideas and concepts and whatnot that the Planning Commission gives us.
Scott, on this, the design guidelines, they seem extremely rudimentary. Where, are we going to be able to flush them out? Or, because even on our residential design guidelines, it took us several meetings to do that. And, you know, it seems like these are much, much more important to the community than, than even those were. So are we going to be able to take some time and go line by, you know, basically flush these out and fill them in?
Not at the level that we did with the, with the, with the guidelines that were for the residential. We're not going to have 11 meetings on this. We don't have scope for that. You're going to have a couple of meetings on it. That's the scope that we have. These were developed by input from the public, through workshops and those types of things. And then we'll be working on some fine-tuning of them based on the input that you provide, and finalizing the document. Later on down the road, we might end up with something that's, you know, slightly different, This will probably be, this is the city's first foray into design guidelines for commercial buildings in town. So that's sort of, that's sort of the scope of it. And it is in context with the sort of ongoing effort that we have. This is, the Downtown and Waterfront Strategic Plan is an offshoot of the General Plan and LCP update that was brought about sort of, you know, as we started talking about the General Plan and LCP, there was a desire to look at the downtown and waterfront, to come up with policies and ideas to better connect those, and that's where this came from.
So, so I'm clear. What we're doing here is we're going to, you're going to take some comments, you're going to implement them into or not, you know, depending. Then it's going to come back to us so we can take a look at it again?
We're going to have at least another, you know, another review part by you, because I think before you can move this to the council, we would want a recommendation from the Planning Commission. You're the land use sort of authority for the city and the one that provides the guidance. So that would be, that would be what we'd be looking to do. So, yeah.
Okay, so, sorry.
I mean, we could, I mean, this could be done a couple of different ways. We could just take the input that we got from G-PAC, take input that we got from you, and then hand the document to the City Council. That's not normally how this process works, though. Normally, you're making recommendations to the City Council to adopt finalized documents that relate to land use. That's your job, really. I mean, you guys have oversight over the land use documents, so specific plans in the city, you interpret them, zoning codes, you interpret them, general plan policies, you interpret them. And normally, and you have full authority to do those types of things, and that's granted to you through the city's municipal code. You know, certainly, the council can choose to take things up and interpret things on their own and change interpretations that you have and all those types of things. That's certainly their prerogative, but you also have those powers, I guess.
Okay, so we're going to be looking, you know, going to go through this process, you're going to take some comments, come back?
Yeah, my only point is this has gone through a pretty, you know, pretty good process to this point. And, you know, we're looking more fine tuning than overhauling at this point, and that's because of the amount of input this has received. If, you know, there's certainly things that you really don't like, those are the things we want to hear about. You know, don't be shy. Tell us concerns, especially the big items that you don't like. And certainly, we're happy to take any sort of commentary that you have in writing. Chair Teft has provided his commentary in writing. We have a pretty good list of stuff from him, because he sits as chair of our G-PAC. He's double dipping here, so, yeah. But, yeah, so we, that's, it's really great if we get stuff from you in writing. We're always happy to take it, you know, just regular commentary and work on stuff that way, too. We do that regularly, so.
I had one question, and there's a lot of plans floating around these days, so it's sometimes a little hard to keep straight what goes where. But about a year ago, maybe a little bit more than a year ago, we had some fairly extensive discussions about circulation on the Embarcadero. We talked about one-way circulation, two-way circulation. We talked about moving traffic over to Front Street. We talked about, you know, and none of that shows up here. Is that going to be in a different document or?
So you're right, it doesn't really show up here. We had those conversations mostly as offshoots of the Centennial Parkway and the Embarcadero widening, when we talked about, are we going to do one-way, two-way, those types of things? And the council adopted those plans with preferences at this point. So that's, that process is done, and that input is going to feed the authorization that council has given me to go out with a request for qualifications to develop the Centennial Parkway project in concert with the Market Plaza project, which we've been identifying as the property that holds Distazio's, the parking lot below it, the parking lot above it, that area there. So they've adopted that Centennial Parkway plan, the preferred, you know, plan there. And while they, you know, they took a lot of the input, and we forwarded that input that the Planning Commission provided, they adopted a two-way circulation component there and didn't consider the Front Street improvements, basically. At least as part of this. I don't know, I mean, I would imagine it's going to look, because we're going out with this together and we're going to want somebody to come in and develop the property with some sort of improvement, probably like a hotel with a retail component to it and maybe a parking structure or something like that. But we're going to want them to develop the plaza component. That plaza component is probably going to look markedly different than the plan that we adopted. And that thing's probably going to be used more as a menu, is my guess, because they're going to want to tailor their project to integrate with that space. And so, anyway, that's my, that's sort of my take on it. There's a lot of things in the plan, and I think they're, you know, that'll be guidance to whoever comes forward with the project to integrate with that. So that's sort of where that's at. They kicked around the two-way, one-way traffic idea and wanted to go two-way, so.
It's, okay.
So the point is, there's not really a circulation component to this, because we have a circulation element in the general plan that we're dealing with, circulation on, which is a much more comprehensive look.
I don't know what my fellow commissioners did, but I've got two pages of comments that are just about the February 2017 plan. So I don't know if we have the capacity to get that up here on the screen so that you can see what I'm looking at on my little.
Do you have the, it's on our website. I wonder if we can, oh, we can't get it up there, though. I saw we connected to it. Yeah, I didn't put it on, I didn't think to put it on the.
I have the hard copy.
I can, I can kind of just.
This is hard copy, if that's helpful for others to look at or if you.
Can I?
Well, I'm just interested, I don't know what people at home see, but if, I'll quote, I don't know how you want to do this, Dr. Teft, if you just want to have us go through one by one?
Head off.
Okay. These aren't in any particular order of magnitude, they're in linear fashion based on page number, so.
Okay, now that, that works.
So page 12 of 104, only 96 or 92 to go. That page is starting to talk about stakeholder interviews, and I know this is historic, but there's things in there like attract more varied demographic, higher-end facilities, things like that. And I'm taking that to mean that this is visitor-based. We're not talking about something for the residents so much as we expect a different set of visitors to come in, and I'm assuming this means by car.
Some of that's, I mean, there's a, there's a component to that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I'm just saying, it seems like it's totally about an external kind of constituent that we're mostly concerned about.
No, I mean, I think, I think it's a mix, because we had, we had a mix of folks that were involved in the outreach, you know, processes that we went through for this, and that included residents and business owners and those types of things. So you're getting input, so some of the input that helped frame this was, is from some of our business owners who are very much interested in having what that looks like from a visitor standpoint and having more visitors and those types of things. So you will see some of that in there. And then you'll also see things like that, the concept for the fish market type thing and that, and sort of, you know, a market that has local goods in it and those types of things. That serves, that serves the entire populace of the city and probably some of the, you know, if we do a good job of it, some of the outlying areas as well. You know, so, and that was, you know, a lot of people liked that idea, so.
No, I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just thinking, though, that it read to me like it was kind of a monolithic description, because, you know, if we, if we look at who the eco-tourists are, they're people who are going to bike into town. They might be going up and down the coast on bikes. They might be coming in on a boat, you know, and there could be other alternative means. You know, increasingly, we're seeing people through valid or invalid mechanisms renting out homes in town, you know? So I think there's a whole series of ways that people are going to enter, and if we, if we only think about somebody driving a car into a parking lot to go into a retail center, I think we're missing a nuance that's in other parts of the, of the plan. So I think making sure that we, we understand who all of these visitors could be, it only, only helps differentiate, you know, the response that we end up getting.
I mean, these were, I mean, these were, most, these are all responses that came directly from the stakeholders that we, that we engaged, and those were, those ran the gamut. They covered citizens, business owners, and that type of thing, so.
And because those are citizens voicing their opinion, I'm going to voice my opinion. On 14, where we get into downtown preferences, likes and dislikes, I think when we see things in a, in a report that say dislike overly modern buildings, I think we should say overly modern bad buildings. I mean, because, I'm sorry, but the best architecture hasn't been done yet, and we haven't seen anything modern in this town yet that I would say begins to scratch the surface of what we could get. We have some houses, especially on the south part of Main Street, as we go through some of the sections of town from the 50s, those are some of the best houses we have, and they would be modern. They're not, they're not the stuff that we see today. So I would say you have to measure some of these dislikes with mediocre modern work as opposed to good modern work. So I don't like coloring no modern work, because the bad modern work is what people are worried about. Because I think if I'm going to come in here and I'm going to build an energy-sophisticated thing that's going to appeal to an eco-tourist industry, I'm going to use every sustainable technique I have, and it's not going to end up being Spanish Revival. It's going to be something really different. And so I don't want to discourage people from pursuing something that would be modern, especially when we're saying we like eclectic architectural styles, including modern elements right up above it. So it's, there's some, there's some, there's some, there's some things there that if we're sending these out as guidelines and background color, I think we have to be really careful about the words that we choose, and even if this is just a report out, I don't want to frame it from somebody coming up with somebody that would be something really wonderful.
Totally valid. I would note that this is input that we received from, through the public process.
Right, but somebody picking this up as a document in the public realm and saying, what am I going to build here, and they, they give me another rationale for building a bad Spanish-style building. And if you can see where I'm going with this on the waterfront. You know, on page 17, I'm not sure what was, what was given to people as design theme elements, why an element called a gateway feature is even a valid category. I think, you know, you come into an area when you come into the area. If you have to have a sign to tell you you've come into an area, you haven't done your design very well. I think the, the waste of money to build gateways and large-scale signs and things like that, I'd be totally against that. And I'm not really sure why, when we have such a kinetic way of getting into town by the vehicles and we have such a dramatic background, we're worried about something at a small scale like a gateway. It doesn't seem to be, to be a natural element to worry about.
Actually, pretty pervasive as it came out of this process was something that we desired at our, at our entry points to the city, because they don't identify that you're here. Also, that is something that not only came out of this process, which is, I would, I will, I will absolutely give on the fact that this is, it has a large component related to economic development. And the city also did an Economic Development Strategic Plan, and it's in a draft phase right now, and the council's in the process of reviewing it, and it identified gateways as an issue as well. So that's a theme that is out there that we're sort of lacking in, you know, from, from two different sources now, both this process and that Economic Development Strategic Plan process.
Okay, we'll agree to disagree on gateway. 25. What are we talking about here? Oh, it's another gateway issue. You know, if I've got the View of Moro Rock, it's the picture as a View of Moro Rock, part of the Embarcadero, and then a town, Old Town Moro Bay sign, I don't mind an Old Town Moro Bay sign, but when it says, "Install gateways with signature elements, materials, and plantings," I don't, I just don't see any more kitsch things in the streets or, you know, fake signs. I don't understand that, so I'm not going to agree with the report on that element or the report out.
Would you mind mentioning the actual page number?
Oh, okay, sure.
The document as well?
Yeah, because it just shows 25 of 104. That would be 2.5 under subheading four.
2.5 is good.
"Celebrate memorable views and connections from downtown to beach, waterfront, and Moro Rock." And the thing, the bullet point says, "Install gateways with signature elements, materials, and plantings." Maybe materials change if that's a gateway, maybe, okay. 28, which responds to 2.8, and this is Chapter 2, Subsection 7. "Promote renewable energy sources, promote eco-tourism, create a business-friendly environment." I really like all of those things. On 44 of 104, which we'll get to at some point, they start to talk about what eco-tourism is, but I haven't seen us build a renewable energy building in town yet. I think, to my understanding, the fire department's the only one that potentially even gets close to what we would consider a sustainable building. I think it's a lead.
Their lead, their lead silver?
Yeah, but that lead silver in about two or three years is going to be Title 24, so we can't.
True. You're absolutely right.
We can't, you know, we can't, if we say promote, it would be nice to do more than promote. I'd almost like to see require, but that's another issue. So I'm not sure what, you know, we're supporting these things here as subsections of support of thriving and robust local economy. I don't know if that's meant that we think there will be clean energy businesses here or not. I don't know what that, that means, but it was just curious the way it showed up there to me. It looks like 34. Let's see, 34. Maybe I'll pass on that one. I'm not sure what I wrote on that. 40 of 104 is 2.20 Catalyst Project C. I would be very cautious of public outdoor space in an extremely tight building environment. I think we have a park at both ends of the Embarcadero, and I, I see the Embarcadero as more of an urban kind of space. And so the idea of outdoor family entertainment, I think it's fine if it ends up being in public rights a way that are abandoned and things like that, but I wouldn't want to see people giving up building space to create additional open space. I think open space is one of the most misunderstood things we have. Good open space doesn't have to be huge. Volumes of open space doesn't mean good open space. And I think we have to, again, the biggest thing I'd say is a concern of mine as I look through, so many of the images are based on what I would call kitsch. They're, they're just referential, you know, stereotype kind of cute things, and I don't think that's what we, we need here. You know, sorry to be so blunt, but 42 is 2.20 Project D. Again, it's talking about the family outdoor entertainment here. I'm sorry. 42, oh. I'm sorry, 42 is 2.22 Project D. And I'm all in favor of everything that's written here about artist space, residential units. I think this is where they talk about the makerspace, but how do we, how do we make sure that doesn't turn into another thrift store? I mean, that's, that's what I don't understand. How do we control what the uses are to that extent when we start to get into some of these things? The biggest thing I have concern about is if we start building larger structures, do we end up with larger vacant areas? You know, we have a lot of empty space in town now, and where's the gravitas to drive those things to being full and to drive these things to being full? So it's just a concern more than anything that's actually written there. I totally endorse what Project D seems to be saying. 47 is, this is the Vision Plan 2.27. There's a lot of architectural references here. I think they're, some of them are trying a little too hard. I, I think that the, there's, there's three examples shown. One is kind of a curvilinear glass and looks like wood. Project one's a 30s deco building pretending to be maybe a ship, and the other one's got a giant. a 30s deco building pretending to be maybe a ship. And the other one's got a giant curved roof. And I don't know, to me, they're trying a little too hard. 49. You know, on 49, we have five buildings shown, three of which are Spanish style. And I'm going to be very hopeful that we don't start looking like Santa Barbara here, or Ventura, or Camarilla, or any other city between Los Angeles and San Francisco that's not Moro Bay. I think the Spanish style is alien to the waterfront, and I would strongly urge us to not support images that portray that on the waterfront. 52 is Project I. And this is where I'm going to be very concerned about the nature of some of the things that are said. Nautical elements include boat shapes, portholes, reference to marine wildlife ropes, anchors, lighthouses, and muted seaside colors. I would like to say that's the exact opposite of that. I would ban any of those things. I think it's kitsch. I think it's like a miniature golf course. It's not going to attract the kind of thing we're interested in. We already have the real stuff here. We don't need references to fake things. 58 is a good example of that. No pelicans. 59, just a little typo. In the middle of the page, it says sandpit, and it's sandspit. Somewhere else, it's used sandspit as one word. So that's three different spellings in one place. Sorry, I grade a lot of writing at my place of employment. I notice things like that. 64, which is 3.8. I would just tend to avoid references to style or advocating a style. I think there's a section here. Let me see where it is. You know, when it says architectural elements to enhance the character of the building, a lot of the things that it lists are not necessarily architectural things. They're decorative things. And I think there are wonderful pieces to the original arts and crafts style, some of the Victorian things that we may see around town that are actually real parts of the architecture as opposed to synthetic cast plastic tack-ons, which is what most things we see are. And I would urge the use of real architectural elements instead of tacked on. I love that when we start to talk about balconies, awnings, porches, stoops, those are things that talk about inhabitation. You can imagine people on them. It would be nice to have those types of elements that are occupiable to animate the front of the building. 65, which is 3.9. Again, I would say most of the structures on there, especially 2A7, are ones I wouldn't want to see or advocate for town or 2B4. I think those are just not acceptable in this part of the coast. They look like they came out of a strip mall or a, I just don't see them fitting. 66, whoops, which is 3.10. I would just say in this area, I would advocate that in the waterfront especially, that we don't advocate stucco. I wouldn't advocate brick or stone. I think the materials palette is much easier to control than shapes. And I like the fact that we can talk about buildings on the harbor that are frame structures built on piles that end up being clad in wood or something that looks like wood, like our typical cement board that we see a lot of today, cement products. 68, let me see, 70. If we're serious about lighting, we should put a Kelvin signature in there. When it says warm light, that doesn't mean anything. We can put a number in there. It should be a technical number. I don't know if it's 2,000 Kelvin, what it would be, but warm means a lot of things to a lot of people. If we end up with too little, it ends up looking orange, like a sodium vapor. If we end up with it too high at 4,000 or something like that, it's going to end up looking blue. So I wouldn't be opposed to putting something in there. It says, energy, encourage energy efficient things, and they're all going to be by code LED. So I would just say that we want an LED or other energy efficient thing of a certain Kelvin kind of color, that we don't get a mismatch across different zones. I do like the images that are on, just so I can say something positive here. On 71, I think the things that are generally shown on 71, which is 3.5, when you get down to that smaller scale, most of those things I think are great, especially our local element there, top dog. 72, 82. Oh, on 76, I'm sorry. Go back here. 76 is where we start to talk about sidewalks. 76 on part 9.9. On-street parking, raised planners, ball bouts. I think when we get into the, this is part of the tie-in with the circulation plan. If we want to encourage people, we have to have the ball bouts where we can. I mean, the idea that you don't have to cross an extra X number of feet, 10 feet on each side of the street of parking, and feel like the sidewalk has taken you out to a much narrower zone to cross. So some of the plans we looked at before, they were trying to use bollards and things to demarcate the area where it was a little ambiguous. And I think that's actually okay between sidewalk and street. But where we actually have sidewalk and streets, I think the idea that to use the ball bouts that are in there is really important. On 82, which is 3.26, the downtown specific guidelines, 3.3. That doesn't seem right. Let me see if I've got the right place here. 3.3 is 2.1A. A mix of traditional retro and modern styles buildings such as deco, Spanish, Victorian. I would just strike Spanish, but that's a personal opinion. I think the craftsmen, the folk, the Victorian, mid-century modern, contemporary, all have a capacity to do something different. The art deco, I know the theater is art deco already, but those other ones imply a much heavier kind of building, I think looks alien here. On 84, 5.2, I'm sorry, this is 3.28, page 3.28. Public signing and weigh finding, again, it's my archway that I'm reluctant to support. 86, the waterfront specific guidelines, maybe this is what Commissioner Luer is relating to, these things seem to be way too wobbly. In downtown, we talk about bright colors. Here, we talk about muted colors. You know, working fishing harbor, I think, should be the thing that we talk about because to me, working fishing harbor means it's actually a little bit more industrial as opposed to this kind of faux Victorian thing. It lets a different palette of materials and colors. The bluff development, we actually had a project here where we were talking about roof ridges, and it said, roof ridges should be oriented perpendicular to the direction of the slope or parallel to the ridge line. The problem with that is, when we have the transparency that we're trying to get from the land to the bay, if we run the ridge lines parallel to the edge of the bluff, we're going to be maximizing the width of the apparent width of the house on the bluff, and you don't see through it. If we actually run it perpendicular to the bluff line, you'll have a peak in the middle, but you're actually putting the high part of your roof perpendicular to the bluff side, and you actually see across the sides of the roof down into the harbor a little bit more deeply. So I'd reconsider the ability of that one to deliver what we might have as other interests in the nature of the way we preserve views in the city. 95, I'm almost done. 95 is 4.5. And PR7, where's that there? Doesn't seem like that's right. 7, 8, 10. I've got my numbers screwed up there.
4.9, PR7.
4.9. There we go. Yeah. So again, I'm going to advocate that we take with a grain of salt the gateway issue, which is also PR8. PR10, I would also take with a grain of salt. Be very cautious about the use of any of those three elements. On page 100, which is 4.10 Catalyst C, that's the outdoor playground, things like that. But I'd be real careful about how much emphasis we put on some of those things. And then on 101, CE2, I think this is the first time I saw food trucks in pop-up restaurants, which I think are fantastic, because it's a totally different type of thing than we have here. And I don't think it's competitive. I think it's just different. And I don't know how the reception of that was when that was floated before, but I think we ought to overtly make note of that because I think it could be controversial. But it's the type of thing that if we would animate the parks, for instance, at both ends of the Embarcadero, and we had the ability to put in food trucks there sometimes, or if we, I just think it's an interesting concept to make sure is noted and try to see how it plays out. And I'm sorry if I seemed overtly picky about this, but this is the last time we're probably going to have a chance to make an impact on the harbor. And, you know, since I've been here for, I don't know, lived in town now for 17 years, we've seen a lot of really modest stuff built, and I think we should get good stuff. And I think we ought to try to not look like every other coastal California town. I think what happened to Avala was a disaster. I think what happened to, you know, almost every city that I see, that I drive down to see our daughter in San Diego, I can't tell one from the other. But you can sure tell ours from everybody else. And I'd hate to lose that because of some arbitrary set of images that were shown when there weren't alternative other ones for people to latch on to. So I'll just be quiet at this point.
We like specific comments.
Well, let's just keep coming this way.
I didn't do my homework as extensively as Commissioner Luer, but Lucas, sorry. But I'll make an analogy, okay? You go down to LA, my sister lives in LA. Beautiful home. HDD TV. Turn on the TV. The ocean is always clean, and it smells like lavender around. That's not reality, okay? When I look at Moro Bay, and you want to be, if it's going to be a working harbor, then that is the entertainment. That is what makes it different. When we talked several months ago, or whatever it was, one of the things that Commissioner Luer brought up that I really liked, when we were talking about the Centennial Parkway, using old timbers, using wood, making it real, not a facade. Like, when you go to solving, you know, and they have that painted, some of the, it doesn't fake anybody out. It just looks ridiculous to me. To me, it's about being real, okay? And I, for instance, I feel that the boat haulout facility, we have a power plant that has, went through, defunct now, went through cooling inlet. I feel that there is an opportunity right there for a proper crane and a working solution in that area. I think that, I think I mentioned this before, but I think that off-ramp, for instance, the north, or yeah, southbound off-ramp off the highway where it drops you right by, what's that, Feed Store?
Lemos.
Lemos, yeah. Right there, by there. You loop around, and you come back, and you bring it through the PG&E property. You could have a working harbor there. And that's part of the feel, that's part of the gateway for Moro Bay. The other thing that I feel that we need, and it's being ignored, and yet, we have legislation in Sacramento that is addressing that, is a eelgrass bank, okay? When we're talking about this, we should also be talking about an eelgrass bank so we can address these issues as we develop the waterfront. So we don't have this saving, you know, two square feet of eelgrass around. Let's deal with that. Now, you know, there's people saying that, oh, you know, they won't grow back there. Well, you know what? Start taking some of those fines from dumping of the CNC pollution and all that stuff. Start using that to help clean up our area there. And we can come up with innovative solutions to grow that. And I think that that should be part of that conversation that we have when we're talking about the waterfront as a working harbor. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Lucas has mentioned in respect with the architecture, okay? We should strive for uniqueness. We should strive for, like, for instance, I like the wood. Yeah, it's higher maintenance, but it has a certain warmth. It has a certain feel, okay? With regards to lighting, you know, we have a dark sky ordinance, and we should try to respect that. And when we walk down the Embarcadero, we shouldn't be like, it shouldn't be like, you know, Colorado Boulevard, you know? It's a living organism there, you know what I mean? And we shouldn't try to light everything up. As far as, it's unfortunate that, as far as the circulation element, that we couldn't have kind of been discussing that a little bit more because there was solutions there that I thought that were maybe worth looking into.
You will be talking about the circulation.
Okay.
As far as.
As we put it together. Okay.
We haven't got.
You know, like that front street idea is, I started looking at it more, and I like it. The other thing is, within the downtown, and talk about mixed use, I like the idea of, you know, maybe this is not the area, but we, let's start thinking in business-to-business, not just retail, but business-to-business type, like necessarily manufacturing, but you know what I'm saying, Scott? Like, something that you could, that a business sells to another business, okay? Maybe manufacturing, maybe, and maybe other than just retail to the public. Affordable, as far as affordable housing, part of the affordability could be like, you know, units on top of commercial spaces. And then we can start looking maybe entertaining height differentials where we can maybe allow a little bit higher bill. maybe allow a little bit high, higher buildings accordingly. As far as the, encouraging pedestrian on the Embarcadero, I, I feel that the, we don't need any, if we're going to talk about movement of traffic, we don't need any bike, anything special for bikes there. You know, you can ride your bike, and you can go on the road, you know what I mean? Because it just, to me, I think the main thing is, is letting people walk, letting them take their time and entertain. The ones that are riding on their bikes, they can dodge traffic and get whatever they want to call, you know?
They're probably passing the car.
Yeah, exactly. You actually are, you know? And, you know, the, the feel, the way I, I don't want to compare it to anything, but like, you know, you go to Monterey over there, when you walk on the piers and stuff like that, it's still kind of old, it's still kind of, you know, they've, I haven't been there in a while, so I don't know how far it's gone to, you know, to retail. But let's keep, I think the, like, materials that we use, let's be careful what the materials we use. And then, and actually make it a working harbor. Make it, you know, help facilitate the, the fishing community, and, and let's integrate it into the, you know, into that whole ecotourism, green kind of feel, you know? You kind of got it? Yeah?
Yeah, we're good. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I'll do a little preface here, and then I'll go, go through my notes. What I liked about both commissioners' comments was, I think we're looking for authenticity and not mimicry, mimicry, or faux, faux anything. I think, you know, what really attracts people is, you know, the experience I had growing up on the docks in San Diego, where it was, you know, you smelled the creosote, and you smelt the, you know, the canneries and the brine of the ocean. That's what people come here for. They don't come here for a, you know, miniature golf course, you know, on the, on the Embarcadero. And I think that's what we should be striving for. The other thing I think is we need a much more extensive design guidelines for our most important asset, which is the downtown and the waterfront. And this is where we should be spending our money, and this is where we should be spending our time. So I'll, I'll forward a downtown design guideline that I worked up several years ago.
Okay.
That was pretty much, you know, based on proven principles that you can see in the local communities, basically in, in San Luis Obispo. You know, they've had one of the most innovative downtown plans in California for 30 or 40 years. And it's right here, and we know it works, and you, you saw the, you saw the buildings going from being derelict down there, and in troubling to, and in trouble to having vibrant pedestrian activity and retail sales. And they did it through staying authentic to what their original character was. They weren't trying to be anything else. And also Thursday Night helped. So, okay, so that's kind of the basis. And I, I agree with most of what the, my fellow commissioners said, with a few exceptions, but very few. So I'm not going to go through the visioning plans, and I think those are, that's background. The, the opportunity sites, such, you know, starting at 2.2, I think that was a fairly good list of what's, what's available. I think there can be more innovation than what we've talked about. One of the things that, one of the quotes that comes to mind when we're looking at that, and we talk about stakeholders and, and surveys and stuff, it's, I think Steve Jobs said, if, if he would have done a survey of what customers wanted, or if Henry Ford would have done a survey of what customers wanted, they all would have said just faster horses. And I think we need to get beyond that, you know? We're, we need to allow the innovation to happen, and this is really where the formwork starts. And a lot of what I see here is faster horses, and not taking it to the next, the next level, which what we need, such as, you know, I don't see anything in here about, you know, integrated, community-wide gigabyte Wi-Fi through the downtown and through the Embarcadero area. You know, that they can have micro, micro sites on each, on each light pole, and do low, low wattage that would flood the area with rampant Wi-Fi. You know, just things like that, that I don't, I don't see in this document, which I think is really important to, to allow and to come.
I would note that isn't our economic development strategic plan.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so we do have, and we actually are doing that right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's really good news. I think that's, you know.
Phase one is, is in the downtown loop, then goes out to, it's phase two, is down to the other commercial areas in town, phase three is to the residential areas.
And the other, the other thing on just, you know, overall, is we need to have under, we need to have a strict undergrounding policy on all, all sites. If you come in for, to replace a washer in your faucet, you should have to underground your utilities, basically. And Project C, page 2 dash, 2.20, where we're, you know, I agree with Commissioner Lucas, all this is cute, you know, trivia, that I think we could have, instead of this, we could have more access to the bay. You could have people actually being able to fish, or to, you know, you know, access the bay right from our streetians, more than putting a miniature golf course there. Project E, 2.24, outdoor harborside activities, ecotourism, such as seaplane tours. I don't know where you're going to land the seaplane. So I don't, I would strike that, you know?
I guarantee you, most afternoons, you ain't going to land it anywhere.
No.
You're not the only one that's mentioned.
Yeah, yeah. You know, you're going to go across the top of the Otters.
Yeah, I said, you're not the only person that's mentioned.
Okay. But, but also having, you know, having dragon boat races, having stand-up paddleboard races, having, having wooden boat shows, having, you know, having tours of an actual fishing trawler. You know, those are the things that I think Morro Bay should be doing, and the city should be doing, it should be, you know, should be helping to create that. So.
It's like one of the best things we had recent time was when the Tall Ship came in.
Right.
That was, that was spectacular, you know?
That's a, that's a great example. That was, people loved that.
Yeah.
Got a lot of positive feedback all over the community from that, both inside and out. I mean, people that I was running into in San Luis, and down the Five Cities area were talking about it.
There was another instance where there was a modern sailing, sailing schooner that came in. It was about 100, 170 foot. They're parked, took the whole south tip here, and it was just gorgeous. There were people, came from all over the county because they heard of that. You know, where the, when the Russian also parked off the, you know, moored off, off of the harbor, harbor mouth. Things like that are integral, and they're real, and they're, you know, they're present day. And that's what we should be shooting for, so the authenticity. 2.28, Project G, you know, the high-end hotel and conference center. This has been bandied about forever, and the question is, do we have critical mass here to support a conference center? And unless we create much more infrastructure, I'm not sure we'll ever have that critical mass, unless we do something like Tom Fie's plan for the plant, where it was actually a, took that, took the whole power plant and turned it into a, a postgraduate research facility with, with integral conference center and development throughout there. We're not going to, that's about the only place that we could actually have a conference center that would be viable.
It is a good point. There's a lot of input that we got from the G-PAC, Chair Tiff knows that, that people were concerned about that. I think we might be changing this more to the, you know, have conference facilities, because we don't have a bunch, we don't have much of those in town, so you could at least have some of those things. It seems like we sort of lacking along those lines. And you, you're right, you'd need a larger, larger property like DynaG site or something to do a conference center.
So I think, I think you're, the larger retail areas and the larger facilities for conference facilities, I think would be more appropriate for our population size. Downtown streetscape furnishing pallet. This needs, this needs a whole, you know, a whole process on its own. For one thing, no concrete furniture, none, not allowed. Engineering department shouldn't be, shouldn't be the style arbitrators for this town. They do a great job in, in location and numbers we need, and, you know, and flow and stuff, but they, they are, they do not create the proper streetscape. So should have planning commission approval, or design, some design-oriented board to approve the streets, streetscape pallets. And once again, authenticity is crucial. And another, you know, another material that should be considered is, is galvanized steel. It's an honest material, it has a depth to it, and it's the only material that'll hold up here. And you can see it on, on our waterfront railings, and that should be, you know, that should be one of the, one of the predominant elements of our streetscape plans and furniture. Okay, 2.34, this is my, you know, it's close to my heart. And, you know, once again, it's a high priority. And I'll just say that, real quick, another story is, we're, we're a harbor that doesn't have a place to fix boats. So it's like we were having an RV park, we were running an RV camping park and repair facility, and the closest, well, the closest repair facility would be a 30-hour drive away, over the Sierra Mountains, to get to the closest place you could have your oil, you know, basically have your, your car, your RV facility put up on a lift, to have it worked on at all. Because that's essentially what we have to do here. To, to go to a haul-out facility, you basically have to travel 30 hours around, in one direction or the other, around the worst points on the western coast. So not having a haul-out facility here is criminal. Page 3.3. We must have some mechanism, mechanism to bring existing buildings into compliance, where we have, if we have any design guidelines at all, there needs to be a point when they're doing, when they're doing work on the buildings, or we're doing work, that we have to be able to have the rest of the building bring in, to be brought into compliance with present standards. And we don't have that ability to, at any, at any point in any of our guidelines, and I think that's really critical. As far as site design, we have to underground all utilities. There isn't any mention in this at all. So if a, if a property comes forward for a building permit, they have to underground all the, all their utilities. Buildings should not be allowed on the Embarcadero, or in the, in the downtown, to have dead zone, dead zones for the pedestrians. As you're, as you're walking down the street, if you want, if you want a pedestrian, if you want, if you want pedestrians further down, you have to pull them along the street. We've got several buildings on the Embarcadero that are complete dead zones. The buildings, you have plenty of activity, you see those dead zones, and you can watch people turn around and go back the other direction. And this has to be part of our design guidelines, and I don't see any mention of it anywhere throughout. You have, you cannot have wide driveways going through the, the walk, the pedestrian area, and you cannot have large open spaces that aren't, have no interest at all. So buildings that have, that are not oriented, orientated towards the Embarcadero or towards the street, that have windows spaced closely together, that have a regular rhythm to them, create dead zones where people just stop, turn around, there's, oh, there's nothing. If they have to walk half a block to get around a building like that, they'll go, they'll turn back. So everything further past that point on the, on the street is essentially non-essential retail space, is non, non-viable retail space. Okay, that's. As far as buildings, item two, heights, massing, and scale. Buildings should be allowed to increase in height at their interior, as long as they have setbacks to allow for light and air to get, get to them. This is, then they should be allowed to have additional height credits for underground parking, interior lot parking, and multi-use spaces where, with that, we're trying to encourage in those areas. So low-income housing on the upper floors, stuff like that. We can develop a criteria for additional height credits, and, and codify them so that they step, that they can get additional height with additional stepbacks. And I think that would create more, more interesting buildings, and create better usage of our downtown area. Page number 3.8, item C, in massing and scale. Using material breakup and color changes is the least effective way to get articulation. And that should be the last, the last straw. And facades, you know, item number in B, still on 3.8, building, building facade should be, you know, one of the orienting, or one of the best way to create a pleasing facade is to use the golden, the golden rectangle, or the golden mean to develop it. mean to develop it. So, you know, if you look at a building that basically works, that's, it's usually, that's usually the, the method that they use to develop it. So we should encourage that. In 3, 3.10. Entries are, you know, on a number, number 11. This is really critical, and it's one of the reasons why some of our buildings don't work and some of the retail space doesn't work on the second floor, or the restaurants don't work on the second floor. It's because the entries should be clearly visible from the street and clearly delineated on the building. And that's, that's really important and should be emphasized. Also, we should, I'd be happy to not allow stucco, but I think it should be highly discouraged as far as materials. Okay, 3.14. Commercial signage. I would like to see us, you know, severely restrict or prohibit interior lighted signs.
It's in the sign ordinance.
It's not in.
It's in the draft sign ordinance.
It's in the draft sign ordinance. I think it should be included in the design guidelines, so that it's not, it's not even a question. Signage should be lit from above to, to, to allow the dark sky, so we don't have overflow. But interior lighted signs just create glare and I don't think are appropriate for, especially for the Embarcadero area. So we'll see if that sign ordinance comes out. Okay, let's see, so... And plaza and outdoor spaces, you know, they really need to be thought through closely. We have, even if you look at, on 3.17, the V, I think 6.2, you know, Roman numeral 6.2, you see, you see a project that we had before us that had public space and was completely usurped by the, by the restaurants that were adjacent to it. And so we need to have follow-up on what are, you know, what we required of them, so... And I'm not sure if this is where it should be, but 3.18. Connectivity, visual connectivity, you know, item B. We need to make sure that the bayfront view corridors remain a minimum 30% view corridor for, for our horizontal facade. And I don't, I don't know if this will be usurping that, but I think that needs to be kept and 3.20. Parking and loading. Parking lots should have a certain percentage of vegetative shading in a certain number of years, and that should be a requirement for all parking lots. So it should have 30%, for instance, it should be shaded 30% in five years by, by trees or vegetation. Parking lots adjacent to a street should have a landscape buffer and screen between the parking lot and the street. Further down, public street furnishings, that's still on 3.20. We should require EV charging stations. That should be part of the street furniture. It should be part of the parking lot requirements. If we're talking about ecotourism, we need to be able to charge electric cars. And there is no good place to charge an electric car in Morro Bay right now. We should also be looking at bike-sharing lots and bike-sharing organizations, and we should have nodes at the most consumer and tourist-friendly sites such as the State Park, maybe the, maybe the Rock. If we have a convention center, we should have a site there, maybe the park up, you know, at the, the top of town on Morro Bay Boulevard, so people can come to the town, jump on a, jump on a short-term rental bike, explore the town, and basically not have to get into their car until they're leaving. So I think that should be included. Public signage and weigh-finding, 3.24, number 12. And another item should be, you know, signage, we should encourage 3D signage, painted 3D signage such as sandblasted wood or, or that has a depth to it that is not internally lit. Is that in the sign ordinance?
Similar.
3.26, number two, number C, where it says defining, character-defining elements and architectural quality. I question bright colors. The, I just question it. You know, they can work, they can be a real detriment. Once again, we should look for authenticity instead of gimmickry. I'd even rather see a really authentic Spanish revival than a faux Victorian, so... In parking and loading, we need to add a number four. Parking lots shall have landscape buffers and screening. And then, once again, number five, once again, bring out that we should have a certain percentage of shading in a certain number of years. And then paving should be variable, varied and permeable, so we don't have oceans of And then the waterfront-specific design guidelines, we need about 30 or 40 more pages in this, this chapter, but as far as general theme, we, it should be a working waterfront as our general theme. I don't know, you know. I think we should be pushing for more larger retail areas in, in the developed spaces rather than cutting up all the spaces into small shops that almost by nature has, have to have kitsy stuff to, to make their nut. I think if we had larger areas, you could actually develop a theme for a retail space rather than having more t-shirts and whatever, you know, plastic stuff. So we see, almost all of the retail we see coming in on the Embarcadero is multiple small spaces, and I think we need to get away from that to have the varied space that we need. Once again, first floor, first floor retail areas should be oriented towards the harbor front walkway, but more importantly, oriented towards the Embarcadero without dead spaces along their, along their facades. I'm almost done, I'm sorry, guys. And then, as far as implementation goes, that's pretty much, you know, I'm good, I'm good with most of that. Just on catalyst projects, streetscape furnishing and pallets, I think we need to include EV charging stations in that. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Thanks for your work. Joe?
Well, first of all, I enthusiastically endorse all the comments that I've heard from my fellow commissioners to this point. But I also endorse most of the ideas that are in the plan. And I can do that because I know that, you know, God or the devil is always in the details, and as the details come out over the years, the things that are too vague or imperfect or outright outlandish will be fixed. But I, but I always ask myself when I'm doing something, you know, what am I trying to accomplish here? And at the risk of getting a little too theoretical, okay, we want to sort of figure out what it is we want to do in Morro Bay and what Morro Bay is to become. But equally important is how are we going to accomplish that? And I was actually a little surprised to see an element called implementation. This is such an enormous undertaking, you know, spread over at least 10 years, and, you know, the dollar amount would certainly go into the hundreds of millions of dollars, and, and the, and the time on the part of city employees is also going to be really substantial, and that's a dollar figure as well. So how do we do this? So, so what I would strongly suggest is even if, I guess it's much too late to include it in this plan, but somewhere along, there has to be something the likes of a strategy for implementation. It's, it's like, you know, Grant was in charge of the Army of the West, and he waged a campaign, you know, and he really had to think creatively, what do I want to do first, and, and how will I achieve that? And then what will be my second thing, and how will I achieve that? So what am I, is, my thoughts are going to be a little disorganized, but we have to sort of really prioritize what we want to do, and not just short-term, midterm, long-term. I mean, look, what's the first thing, and who does it, and what will it cost? And if we don't have the money, how will we achieve it anyway? Okay? I'm really, I think it's really important to be proactive, and by that I mean, most of the resources for what I'm hearing are undoubtedly going to come from the private sector, by necessity, I guess. Okay? Well, you know, I don't want to just be passive, waiting to see who sort of, you know, backs up to the garage door or the loading platform with an idea. So, you know, I, I want us to get really, really specific. So if we're, you know, talking about a loading dock or a conference facility, we, we need to get really specific so that when somebody with a big checkbook says, I'm, I'd like the idea of a conference, we don't have to simply jump and shake his hand and agree because we already have a concept of what it should be, and we don't have to buy into the necessity of the first project that comes our way. So it requires a lot of research, and then planning, and then outreach, and all those sorts of things which are really time-consuming and therefore expensive. So, and I don't, I don't know how you, you go about achieving these things in a strategy. I mean, I have some ideas. You know, I just, I, I don't, I don't want this plan to be a fine-sounding plan that most of which is never accomplished, but which we were able to say 10 years from now, well, we gave it a great try, but we simply didn't have the money to do it. One of the things that comes to mind is that Morro Bay has a really remarkable wealth of talent in its citizens. They've come with all sorts of really sophisticated abilities. And, you know, I can recall from my previous career as, when I was in high school, I had a department, and, and when I, when I, I wanted to do a variety of things, and I didn't have, I knew I didn't have the time with teaching responsibilities, so I established an executive committee. And these, and I said, okay, I got, I sort of, I didn't interview, I sort of observed, and I found a group of people, a small group, five, and these were really self-starters. And I would, I would say, look, this is what I want to do, I have no idea how I'm going to do it, or could do it, so I want you to figure out how to do it, and then go achieve it, and periodically keep me informed, but essentially you do it. So this would be, this would be one strategy. These would be an executive committee, small, to, again, research, find the private interest candidates, go to them with our ideas and see what they thought of the ideas, and sort of get, take a proactive approach that way. And, and small, so because, just because it can operate better. And I think it was, it's interesting, you might, I, I had several projects, and so I paired up two people for each of these, they were fairly complex projects. I mean, I want you to find a studio, and I want you to get me a venue at the studio where the kids can put on their annual showcase, you know? And two people, you know, provides a kind of a social responsibility where each person really doesn't, might, they might do more than they otherwise would do because they feel responsible, because the other guy's doing some work. Anyway, that's what I mean. So one, one strategy would be volunteer executive committees, but there could be a whole host of others that, you know, that smarter minds than mine could think of, but I'd like to really see some strategies as to how we do this. You know, another one is incentives. Like, I'm not really concerned that a, we don't have a sufficient demographic massing for a hotel complex, because that would become readily apparent to anybody in the hotel business. They, we don't need to figure that. They would come and tell us, we have enough people, or we don't, or it's not in close enough proximity to enough urban areas. But we need to strategize on what the incentives could be. Well, what incentives can we offer to get these various people in private enterprises, entities, enterprises or activities to come and do some of the things that we want them to do, you know? And I, and I, and I really like the idea, particularly with respect to the, the commercial development enhancements of the plan. There, I think it's really essential to do what we sort of, you know, practiced today a bit, which is the sort of preliminary discussion where they come to us with an idea, and, you know, and we say, yeah, we sort of like the idea, but this is how we'd like you to modify. Anything to avoid this really well-developed, detailed plan brought by a capitalist to Morro Bay that may or may not coincide with what we want, but such that the economics and the rewards of saying yes might be overpowering to the people who make the decisions. Let's see, yeah, that's, that's preliminary review, strategies. Oh, yeah, oh. And again, with respect to the incentives, I, you know, I, again, I would, I would like to see in this plan, or perhaps a secondary document, I, and I think the secondary document probably could be developed within the Morro Bay community, you know, in terms of... could be developed within the Morro Bay community, you know, in terms of what fees could be waived, or, or, well, I'm thinking that the very first thing to do in terms of implementing this kind of an overall plan would be to get more people to come to Morro Bay on a daily basis. Okay? So I say to myself, well, then the first thing we should do is do something on the Embarcadero that brings more people in. And I recall from that Los Angeles seminar, the success that Urban Architect had with some, again, the things that we've talked about, the widening of the sidewalks and those bowlouts, whatever they're called, and tree canopies, and maybe even a brick or cobblestone down the middle, and barring cars on the weekend, or perhaps entirely. And it brought people there. Okay? And then it might be a relatively simple matter to say, and say, okay, well, it's going to, it's going to take money to do that. We're going to assess the commercial establishments in the area because we're confident that more people will come, and that will translate into greater sales. There might be a little bit of disbelief initially, so maybe there should be some sort of a rebate element, meaning, okay, if we can't demonstrate a significant increase in pedestrian traffic in a period of five years, then some of the assessments that we used from you to build the benches and plant the trees and widen the sidewalks, you know, perhaps that gets rebated somehow, to sort of take the risk away, create an incentive, okay, which is maybe minimizing some of the skepticism and the risk initially. And once, and once the commercial owners see that something is working, they'll be much more persuaded to take, you know, the next step and the third step and the fourth step. So that's what I was thinking, is exactly how are we practically going to achieve this? And I don't have, I certainly don't have all the ideas, but I think if you put people together creatively, thinking about incentives and risk reduction and reducing skepticism. I recall again at that seminar, you know, with, some of the fees might come from parking fees, and recall how they were skeptical about it. They didn't appreciate the expense associated with a car in that parking space, but they were won over when their business increased, and the monies were assured from the parking fees, they were assured would go to improving their immediate environment. So they were benefiting from it. And that's what I mean by incentives and strategizing on a really concrete, specific, nuts and bolts way to get things done. That's all I have to say.
Very good. Okay. I did submit some written comments as part of the G-PAC process, so I'm not going to go through all of these specific things that have to do with what's written here. I would say, I agree with most of the themes that have been brought up here in terms of authenticity, in terms of not, not trying to create things that look like other things. But I would like to speak just for a second about what's not in this plan. In terms of opportunity sites. I think it's fairly obvious that the sites with the biggest, greatest potential, which are the most underutilized currently in Morro Bay, are the street ends on the Embarcadero. And I just don't see how, this, this, this plan purports to serve as a guide for private development and public investment and decision-making over the next five to 10 years. That's a quote. I don't see how we can say it's that if we don't deal with street ends as an issue. I mean, I just think that, that's essential. That's an essential part.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit, of street ends?
Well, the ends of the street, you know, that are now currently used for surface parking down on the Embarcadero, they don't have to be surface parking. They can be public facilities, they can be parklets, they can be commercial, they can be, you know, that's a decision that needs to be made. Otherwise, they're going to sit there and park half, you know, park maybe 10 cars in each one on this two or three or four million dollar piece of property for the next five to 10 years. It makes no sense.
It's actually one of the changes we need to make to the plan, to bring it into consistency with the economic development strategic plan, because it identified all of the street ends as things that should be done. And so, I mean, while that's still in draft format, and we have to run that back again through council, that was well received. So not only have you mentioned this many times in the past, Chair Teff, it is, it is something that would be consistent with the economic development strategic plan, so having, having them harmonized, I think, makes a lot of sense.
To follow up on that, when I used to live in Austin, Texas, they started the Fifth Street, you know, festival basically every Tuesday night. And so at the intersections, they would have a different activity, usually a band and barbecue, and then, and created a pedestrian way in between. But that changed. I was able to watch, within about six months to a year, Austin changed from a derelict section of town until the most active nighttime community in all of, basically in all of Texas at that time. So the street ends could be that to us, and I firmly agree.
They could be, they could be a lot of things, but now is the time to make that decision, to make that plan. The second thing I would like to bring out, bring up is the idea of City Park. City Park could be a nucleus for the east end of downtown Morro Bay. But in order to do that, the city needs to own the entire block. So I think that one of the things that we need to do is to acquire those few little commercial properties at the west end of City Park and really develop the park itself as a center for redevelopment of the area all the way around the park. There's fantastic potential, particularly for higher density housing, because you're right next to Albertson's, you're right next to the post office, you're right next to City Hall. But the major thing that I would like to bring up here is that this, this plan talks a lot about what the Embarcadero is going to look like and what the Embarcadero, and what the downtown is going to look like. What it doesn't talk at all about is what it is. And I think that's essential. I mean, I think the main thing that we can do to connect downtown and the Embarcadero, and to revitalize downtown to some extent, is to have more people there. Okay? And if you look at the existing patterns, okay, the downtown area around Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard, and extending for about a block in either direction, north-south, and about three or four blocks to the east, okay, has developed a pattern of what could be considered pedestrian-oriented commercial development. Okay? Places, you know, the bead shop, the restaurants, the taverns, the, you know, places that are interesting for people walking along the street to go into. That, and that's what we need to encourage on the ground floor downtown. Okay? And particularly, you talk about dead zones between Morro Avenue and Main Street along Morro Bay Boulevard, totally dead zone. So, so part of this has to be saying, if you're going to develop something in that area, these are the uses that we expect to see. I mean, pedestrian oriented, a cheese shop is a pedestrian-oriented development, a grocery store is not. Okay? Grocery store, you go in your car, you get your stuff, and you leave, right? You don't linger around and look next door. By the same token, if you look along Harbor Street, it has developed into more of a destination-oriented commercial activity. There's offices there. There's quite, there's quite a few financial offices, there's the post office, there's the city offices. And if you look the other direction on Pacific, almost all of the new development there is residential. Okay? So we have, you know, I think we have to acknowledge these trends and encourage them. So, you know, I really think that we need to say, in this area of the downtown, we expect the uses on the first floor to be pedestrian-oriented commercial, general commercial or residential, you know? We need to, we need to develop that specificity. And particularly, we need to encourage this pedestrian-oriented type of development in sort of the core of the downtown. If you look at downtown right now, let's talk about height for a second, okay? If you look at downtown right now, the predominant form of development is a single-story retail, okay? 15 to 20 feet in height, somewhere in that area. Okay? That's the character of our downtown. So the question is, so, you know, if somebody wants to come in and develop another similar building, fine. Okay, that's all right. But if you want to increase the number of people in the downtown, particularly on weekends, during the off-season, at night, okay, the way to do that is to have more people living downtown. Okay? And so then how do you incentivize that? How do you make that happen? You say, the height limit downtown is 20 feet, but if you put residential on the second story, it's now 30 feet. Okay? If you put residential on the second story and deed-restricted affordable residential on the third story, now it's 37 feet, with appropriate setbacks, as you were talking That would be for the area east of, east of Main Street, along Morro Bay Boulevard. West of Main Street, an ideal place for pedestrian-oriented commercial on the ground floor, visitor-serving on the second floor. So if you want to build a two-story building, fine, you put visitor-serving on the second floor. But that, that's what, that's the kind of planning that we need here, not just what it looks like, but what it is. Because I think that is the essential ingredient to making things work.
I just wanted to follow up on Dr. Teff's comment. Didn't we have a meeting, where we talked about those zoning issues specifically around the triangle? I remember talking about that before. There was a zoning component to the general plan that gets to some of the things Dr. Teff was talking about.
The land use, yeah.
A few of our opportunity sites in the downtown waterfront strategic plan are echoed or expanded upon in the land use alternatives that you did take a look at in March. So we actually have already revised the proposed, the preferred land use to include making that whole block park, which doesn't include the details of city purchasing the property, et cetera, but.
Yeah, because there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of separate issues here. One is the nature of, what's the urban design plan, which gets into the open space, the shaping of the buildings, the, you know, the nature of these, these streetscapes. One's the design guidelines that govern the individual structures and get down to a much finer grain of detail, and then the other one's the land use. And they all work together. I completely endorse what Dr. Teff said, but I think we did have a record of some of those things already being in there, because we talked about the Triangle Park as being an absolute, you know, goldmine down the line. And I like his subdivision of visitor-serving versus pedestrian, but it, I cannot agree more that we have to get people downtown. And it's infinitely cheaper to build a unit downtown than it is to build an affordable housing unit, extending the roadway system, extending the infrastructure systems somewhere else in the city that's vacant. So it's the most efficient way to get the highest number of people for the lowest costs and things that'll actually be affordable. So I think those are great ideas that he brought up.
And another thing with that Triangle Park, we could actually encourage something, you know, more innovative in having underground parking and park above, where that would then open up for low-income housing. You'd have parking in that area as a, as a, as a draw. You could have basically low-income or actually second-story housing above that you don't need the parking for. So, because it would be taken up in that underground parking. So I think Monterey does something like that with one of their parks.
And just one other thing that I'd like to suggest, we have, we have a kind of a preliminary situation here, in my opinion, in that we, we have this list of opportunity sites, and we have this list of catalyst projects, but they don't map, they don't necessarily map to each other very well. Okay? So it almost is like, if you have five catalyst projects, or nine catalyst projects that you, that you want to consider, you really need to look at the opportunity sites for each one of those projects, rather than simply sort of generic, because some of those fit better in some sites, and some of them fit better in other sites, you know? So, for example, to take the family-centered outdoor entertainment, it seems to me that an obvious site for that is Coleman Park. Okay? Which is already devoted to that use, is massively underdeveloped, you know, massively under-maintained, would be, it's city-owned, it would be a very economical situation to put that there, rather than in one of these sort of predetermined opportunity sites, you know? So it's almost like you need to go through the catalyst projects and say, what would be the best opportunity sites for each one of these?
Scott, can I ask you, on the big, the big picture here is the power plant property, okay, which we're not talking about, is that right?
So purposely, because that's a big site.
Right.
And, you know, what's going to happen is out of the, both, you know, I think out of the land use plan for the general plan and out of the, out of the zoning code and zoning maps that go along with that, we're going to identify that as a, as a master plan site. If somebody takes that property down, meaning purchases it, they're going to need to come in and do a master plan on it to show what's going to go there. It's 100 acres. It's a huge site, and can reshape much of what happens down there, and it's that important that it needs its own plan.
Okay.
And that's the conversation that we've been having throughout this sort of process, is we're going to do that there. We're not going to try to, with this plan, you know, that we, that we, that we're casting across a large area, we're not going to pick that up too and say, yep, it's going to cover that too. It just didn't make sense. And we want, that property's going to be so expensive, not only for somebody to purchase, but to develop, we want them to be able to be involved in the story too. And that's going to mean, they're going to be looking at it from an economic standpoint, and here's the return on investment I need, and this is what it looks like, and here's the palette of things I can do, here you go, city, what do you think? And it's going to be people that are very sophisticated, from a development standpoint, that do end up taking it down when it gets taken down. It's not going to be somebody that doesn't really know what they're going to do with it. You know, it's going to be somebody that's done this and has a really good idea about what it takes economically to make redevelopment of that site happen. And then the city's going to have to say, yep, we're okay with that, or no, we're not okay with that.
However, I agree, but we need to think in how it's going to integrate. Okay? When I speak to a lot of the people that, you know, a lot of my friends grew up here, you know, there was a meeting one time, and they were talking about branding. Branding, three stacks and a rock, we got the brand, you know what I mean? It's like, we don't need anything else. A lot of people that say, that's part of Morro Bay, okay? Reinforce it, call it good, do whatever. Even the building itself, you know, even the building itself. And when you integrate, and what Commissioner Lurie was saying, when you, when we integrate it to the industrial, industrialism, or the industrial heritage, okay, of our Embarcadero as well, I'm not saying, oh, use the one-room cooling anymore, don't get me wrong, but integrating it into this, it has to integrate into this plan in the future. And because what I see is, I see, you know, that building, those. And because what I see is, I see, you know, that building, those stacks, they're not going to go anywhere. You don't have to take them down. You can just now build off that, and now we can turn it into something else. But integrating it and thinking, forward-thinking it.
Yeah, I mean, that sort of direction can be provided pretty easily through the general plan, land use component, and through the city zoning code, fairly simply. And it's going to be identified in there as something, again, it has to be a master plan. It's also the conversation, I mean, what you're talking about is the exact same conversations that I personally had with the companies that were looking to buy.
Okay.
Saying, "Hey, you know, the city's tied to this facility, it's been here for a very long time, you know, you should, there's a number of reasons why you should consider sort of reuse of existing infrastructure there, because, one, you're never going to get a building as tall as the building that's there."
Exactly.
And two, you can, there are examples out there, you know, both here and abroad, where they've repurposed industrial facilities.
Right.
For other purposes, and they've come out really well. Some of them, not so well, but there are good examples where it was done, and you could see that working here, you know? And then it still sort of, you know, harkens back to what our history was, because it's been there for a very long time.
Yeah.
And then what we end up doing with the stacks, who knows? You know, I mean, people have all different kinds of ideas about that. I can't go into a meeting where I bring the issue up, where I don't get, you know, 10 or 15 ideas, you know, one of which always includes a zipline going somewhere. So anyway, yeah, I mean, people, you know, they gravitate towards them, and it means something to them. I agree. Resonates.
Yeah, the Morro Bay Power Plant is an incredible facility, and it's a credible building. And having the first instance of the first thought in your head is, "Oh, we're going to tear it down," I think is the wrong approach.
Yeah. In a couple, it's interesting, a couple of the companies that we talked to that were looking to purchase it, one of them, you know, they had a whole, they brought their whole team here from back east, and one of the architects was like, "Wow, we could repurpose things, it'd be awesome."
Yeah.
And he was fired up. He was like, ah, getting his hands in the, and then we told him what our height limitation was, and he's like, "We absolutely should repurpose it, because then there's a lot more opportunity there," you know? And so you end up with a mixed-use building that's got a lot of different things in it potentially, because that building's.
Yeah, and essentially all those swings off to the east side could all be infilled with glass, and you can double the square footage of that building really easily and keep it at the same height level.
Yeah, we, with that one group, we actually went to lunch with them, and like, the rest of the guys in the group, like, had to calm him down.
Yeah.
He was so excited about opportunity. So I mean, that, you can see that resonating with others.
The other thing I wanted to just touch on was what Joe was saying about, like, a small group, and he called them executive committee. When I was in the rocket business, we used to call them tiger teams, and they were like a specialist in different areas. And I think that it's something that maybe, because you could entertain, you know? And you could pick up a tiger team guy from maybe Cal Poly, maybe one from Questa, maybe from, and then, and not very many. You don't need, like you said, you keep a group small. But I think that when a group's small and focused, you make good progress, and it's a real, from my experience, a really efficient way of getting a lot of good work done in a short amount of space.
Yeah, and I do think that was an interesting idea that you came up with there, and one that is actually, because we're doing all these for planning efforts all at one time, the Economic Development Strategic Plan actually, you know, it gives you, some of the implementation pieces include who's going to do them. You know, when you're talking about economic development, some of the things the city's not capable of doing, you know, from that standpoint, and it identifies, "Hey, this is something that Chamber, you know, should do. Oh, hey, this is something you should go get out, your gardening clubs to go do for the beautification types of things, get those groups together." And it did some of that. And so that might be something that we could, you know, look with, from a, look at for a starting point, and maybe do something similar, because it was also put along in the table with implementation and timeframes in it, because the strategic plan is also a, you know, sort of short-term, intermediate, long-term plan, but doesn't get much beyond about 10 years, maybe 15 if you stretched it. Really mostly focused on five.
Yeah, to expand on that, I called these people, in the general, the largest sense of the word, producers, but they were typically, they had started and expanded a small business, or they were literally a producer of films or documentaries, or they were a high-level business executive, but not of the sort of bean counter variety. These were people who, again, good research and staff, and get something done, and then come back and analyze and revise it, their estimates as well. The other, examples of architecture and repurposing, there's no finer example, I think, than the Monterey Aquarium, which is, you know, magnificent. It's one of the finest architectural examples I've ever seen, but certainly repurposing. And a couple of thoughts just came to mind, again, with respect to strategizing that. You know, I would urge that the city of Morro Bay, in its attempt to develop some of these vacant properties, should never sell them. They should always be leased in some arrangement or another. It just, if there's any single rule that's true of California is that real estate, especially real estate in proximity to the ocean, only grows more valuable with each year, and astronomically more valuable than anybody thought. And then the second thing is, I remember some meetings ago, when Commissioner Lucas mentioned that the charm of Morro Bay is in these small plots that were bought and developed, so that there's little storefronts. But I suspect that with the properties that are readily available for development, and they're pretty large lots, and given what property costs, that, you know, a well-heeled developer's going to come in and want to buy, you know, that half-acre lot, and, you know, put up a big building, and somehow maybe architecturally divide it into segments so that it sort of resembles Morro Bay and its earlier, its earlier design or evolution. But that's not really going to work. A big building is a big building, even if you try to make it look like a series of small buildings. So we should really give, and it's just from a common sense standpoint, Morro Bay is successful in its charm, because it has a lot of these little properties and little storefronts. So let's stick to that, not let's fall into a trap of thinking we can sort of fabricate that on a wider scale. Let's do what was successful and try not to do what really wasn't successful. So keep the new arrivals, commercial arrivals in Morro Bay, small buildings, small enterprises.
Yeah, I think the value of this document isn't to inform local investors, it's for those people from out of town that are going to come in and say, "What do you want? What can I do here?" And we want their inventiveness, but we also wanted to tell people what we cherish here, which is why I'm so concerned about it seeming to be generic in parts over the way it's presented now. You know, I think the opportunity sites are fascinating. I love the ideas in almost all of the, you know, focused development types that are featured there. I do think, though, that, you know, when the city got control of the waterfronts and had the small leases, that makes sense, because it faces the water. These pieces on the east side of the Embarcadero don't face the water, they don't have the view, they've got a bluff on one side, a building on the other side. The only thing we can count on is pedestrian activity, proximity to the harbor walk, you know, and maybe getting up to the roof. I imagine the roofscapes of these things being much more vital than anything we've got now, probably some new generation of architecture, about the windscreen designs up there that's different than the ones we see now. So I don't have any trouble at all with them being different, in terms of, as long as they're taking advantage of the real things, you know, and not trying to be something they aren't. And I think that it'll all play out with smart people. But I just did want to say, too, the, you know, my first entry into speaking in public in Morro Bay was the North Embarcadero waterfront, back in 90, you know, say, 2002, '04, something like that. And that's what we came up with. We had eight or nine examples of power plants that had been recycled successfully. And that document's still around here somewhere. Dust that off and look at the thesis project by one of the students at Cal Poly that studied it. He's got a beautiful night rendering of the aluminum facade removed with a glass facade looking into the depth of the building with mixed use, anything you can think of, it fits in there. You know, and the beauty of that project is, that's the first large-scale example of an aluminum-skinned building in this part of the world, and the state architectural historian said it was viable for the architectural, to be a historic landmark because of that. And so the volume of space in there is just unbelievable, and anybody that's been to the top of that thing, you see San Luis, you see everything up the coast from there, it's unbelievable. And to think that we would tear that down and lose all of those experiences of volume and potential, you know, I just hope when we talk to people, we don't say, "When you tear it down." Because when you look at the property, you know, because it's an amazing thing, I'd hate to see it torn down, but we have to be careful what we do here, because what we do here is going to be seen as a connection to that. Those people know they're not going to build in isolation, they want to see what the city's committing to in these documents. And I cannot emphasize enough, if we look like, you know, some small, you know, I, we just have to be very careful that we don't lose what we have to try to get something that's already been repeated 50 other places, you know?
You, do you have an earful?
Yeah, no, that was great. No, thank you, you guys did a great job.
Thank you, that was plenty of input.
So.
Can I ask another question?
Sorry.
Okay, sorry to get you up. We didn't discuss the topic of chain stores and stuff, you know? We're talking about authenticity and small-town character and stuff. Where are we with that? Is there?
I think our next meeting, we're bringing Martha in with zoning, right? Oh, is that the G-PAC meeting? On Thursday? Oh, we're talking about a G-PAC, okay. Sorry, we're not, we don't have that coming forward, yeah, right. So when we bring zoning forward, you guys will get an opportunity to weigh in on that. We're running, what's the name of the document? Sorry.
Which document?
The zoning document, we'll bring it forward.
The diagnosis memo.
Yeah, the diagnosis memo, thank you. For zoning, so it talks about a lot of the zoning issues that we're bringing forward to G-PAC.
And then when we get down to the granular effect of, you know, what I feel like would be zoning for the Embarcaderos, such as high limitations and open view corridors and stuff like that, is that in that document then?
It will be, we're just at the beginning stages of that update. That's running behind the DWSP and the land use, the general plan and the LCP. So that has just started. The memo that Scott was referring to is a synthesis of the initial input from the stakeholders and the city staff about what are the issues that people already know about, and then there will be several other G-PAC meetings coming up in the near future on specific sections of the zoning code. And then, I believe, similar to the way we've been running the general plan LCP, then those things will then come to the Planning Commission after they go to the G-PAC.
And that document also has some mechanism for bringing non-conforming structures into compliance.
Zoning will deal with non-conforming.
Okay.
So, yeah, a couple of questions. In G-PAC, so far, we've dealt pretty much only with the land use element? When, do you have a schedule as to when we'll be dealing with the other six elements?
That's what's coming next. We're toggling between the zoning and the other parts of the general plan and LCP now, so it probably will be, you know, one month it'll be zoning, and the next month it'll be moving through the rest of the general plan LCP. But yes, that's coming.
Yeah, we also went to, this would probably have been better underneath my comments, but we're talking about it now, it makes more sense. So for the effort as it relates to the general plan LCP update, we've added additional meetings for the Planning Commission to review documentation. Right now, it's six, and that depends on, and then we added 12 for G-PAC. Those can be moved around a little bit, but we've added it to that, because our, the project length is being pushed out. I mean, our project end date is in August 2018, which gives us a little bit of time before we have to submit all of the documentation to the Coastal Commission and OPC for final products, which is in December of 2018. Yeah. So our timeline has been pushed out, council's agreed to that timeline, and it can't be pushed out any further, really, because then we run into the hard deadline when our grant deliverables are due. So that's where we're at, and we've, you know, we've budgeted accordingly, and we're working through that in the contract amendment with Michael Baker right now to bring that forward, so. So that's coming forward, and that's sort of adding, you know, additional workload to you guys for that, you know, for that function. Dr. Teff gets to see it twice, lucky him.
So do you have any estimate when we might see the DWSP back again here?
Yeah, maybe a month or two, yeah, probably. I mean, we haven't ruled any of the, again, we haven't really ruled, I don't know if they have. You know, we got a lot of input from G-PAC with several meetings, as you're aware, and then we got a lot of input from you folks, and, you know, and if you think of other things, you know, over the next few weeks on this, if you look at it some more, feel free to, you know, email us or what have you, happy to take it. But this was great, and you guys did a great job giving us input, and a lot of it similar to the stuff we got from G-PAC, and a lot of it different, which, the different stuff's the stuff we like, you know? See what else we might not have been hearing, and then it sort of does check some of the other things that we were hearing too, so that's good too, I guess.
Okay. Well, with that then, we will move on to Planning Commissioner comments. Are there any, anything we haven't talked about?
I would like to say something, and this is in reference to the other huge project that's going on in the city, and that's our sewer plant that we're building. First of all, forgive me for not giving a follow-up to that climate change symposium, I've just been busy with Family Matters, but my take-home from that symposium, and a lot of it, was, it had to do with environmental justice, and with regards to climate change and sea level rise. And what was one of the biggest things that was encouraging is the fact that here in California, I'm glad we're in California and not Washington, because the issue is, and as being a coastal community, it's dire. California is going to be affected because of the upwelling in our currents and everything else. It's going to affect our fishing industry. I mean, we already got little samples of it with the domoic acid issues with the shellfish and sea otters getting, and sea lions getting sick. But more pointedly to this issue with the WRF. I've been on the WRF CAC almost for two years, which is the advisory committee, and from my experience, this is, the whole process is ass-backwards, okay? I'll give you just an example. The lift station that they're proposing, and force main to go to the Tri-W, the engineering cost alone, they're talking into $1.2 million. We don't even have a project yet, but that, that amount of money, when I compare what we did when I was working in Cayucas, you know, we did a lift station, now granted, it wasn't as big, but we did a lift station, it was on, near the beach, it went under a creek, so it went through Escha, and I was environmental monitor on that, as well as the oversight. You know, we did that project with a 10% contingency, and we came in within 4% of that whole project. Here, we got consultants that are, that because of these unknowns and all these other things, they're 20, 30% contingencies. This is like absurd. And I think that, you know, the public needs to wake up to the fact that we are in, you know, this is, when I look at environmental justice, this is something that we're going to be burdened for years. And what I see is we're turning consultants into millionaires on the backs of fixed And what I see is we're turning consultants into millionaires on the backs of fixed-income people, people that have to rent, that are trying to rent. We're talking about affordable housing here and stuff. This is going to be something that people need to wake up to and need to get involved, because it is a really serious issue now. And, I mean, it's been for a while. And there are other opportunities that we have, that we have to look at. One of them is, I mean, we could be collaborative with Los Osos and Cayucas, we could look at that, you know what I mean? And, and there's other, other, other opportunities that we've already went through. So I just wanted to, and more to the public than, than to any, you know, all of us, you know, that are involved with city stuff, know some of this stuff, but, you know, my, my heart goes out to the, to the older people and to the people like, that are single parents, single dads, single moms, that are trying to, you know, just trying to make it, and grew up here, you know? And so, you know, I just hope that we could, you know, come together and, and really come up with something a little bit better.
I just wanted to say one thing about the mention of the franchises and chains. I think there was a beautiful article in Bloomberg this morning about how the mom-and-pop restaurant is actually taking stuff, taking share away from some of the major food chains, which I thought was just spectacular.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a, it's a little bit of a complicated thing, because some of the businesses that we think of as being hometown miners, for example, is actually a chain, you know what I'm saying? Although we, you know, I mean, hey, man, miners is my place, but, you know, but it's actually, so we have to allow for that a little bit, too. Okay. Planning Director comments?
I, I don't have anything beyond what I, what I mentioned earlier. I mean, I was just kind of giving you a little bit of an update about where we're at with that, and that we've budgeted for some additional meetings, funded through our general plan accumulation fund, that's part of the permits that we take in, permit fees that we take in at the front counter of the building, so. Hence the reason council didn't have any problem approving it.
Well, then, if there's no, no additional business, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting here at the Vets Hall. Oh, I would like to thank Amy for spending the evening with us. Our next meeting on June the 6th, 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Thanks for checking.